All right, call of November first, two thousand twenty-three, City Council meeting order. Mr. Smith, you give us the current votes and fact of the day, please, sir.
Let us pray. Our God, our Father, we once again come with humble hearts, thankful for the many blessings you bestowed upon us for this opportunity to be servants of this city. We ask from Father, do you continue to lead, guide, and direct us in all that we shall say and do we pleasing and accepted in your sight? Blessed are heaven and father, those who are in this midst this afternoon. This we pray in thy son, Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. On November the first, nineteen fifty-two, the United States denotes the world's first demo nuclear weapon, the hydrogen bomb, on Ekon Eto'o in the Pacific. The test gave the United States a short-lived advantage in the nuclear arms race with the Soviet Union. Following the successful Soviet denotation of an atomic device on September nineteen forty-nine, the United States accelerated its program to develop the next stage in atomic weaponry, a thermonuclear bomb, properly known as a hydrogen bomb. This new weapon was approximately one thousand times more powerful than conventional nuclear devices. Fact of the day.
All right, council meeting minutes from October eighteenth. Any adjustments? Not look for motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Nesta.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
All right.
All those motion carries. Next up, how many times has this been?
It can never be too many.
Never be too many, absolutely. So this is the week of the family. And Victoria Lady is always gracious, come over from Ocoe to be a part of this proclamation. So I just want to read that. And where it's proclamation states, whereas the family is the foundation of the city of Apopka, is the family that installs, instills pride and a sense of community in our city. And whereas Apopka is blessed with a multitude of families, an essential part of its culture, social, and spiritual fabric, and where strong families are at the center of strong communities, and we should take time to honor the importance of families and to recognize the special connections that support and strengthen them throughout the year. And whereas during the celebration of the family, we will also remember and pray for the families of our men and women serving in the military, and whereas by strengthening the family unit, our community, cities, and nation will be stronger for future generations. Now therefore, I Brian Nelson, Mayor of the city of Apopka, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the city of Apopka, hereby proclaim November fourth, two thousand twenty-three through November eleventh, two thousand twenty-three to be week of the family. So congratulate you. Yes, yes, yes. You want to say a few things? You want to say anything? Be good. Just go to the mic, please. Thank you.
I appreciate Apopka for being a wonderful place for families all year long, not just one week, but all year long. You have wonderful events here. And I attend as many as I can, and thank you for that.
Thank you for coming, Victoria. Appreciate it. Yes, yeah, yeah, we'll get pictures.
We'll post the song next time. Oh.
All right, public comment.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you all again for what you do for us. The picture that we have up right now and what I'm wearing today is from the Brotherhood ride. I happened to trip across this the other day running into Commissioner Smith. But it's a six-hundred-mile ride to recognize first responders who have perished in the line of duty. Their stop in Apopka, excuse me, Monday was to recognize our fallen firefighter, Austin Duran. And my shirt reads, I guess the front reads, "So stand down, my brother. You have completed your shift. Let our legs carry your memory and remind all who listen that you gave your life to save a total stranger and protect our community." Very moving presentation, a moving day, and an awesome tribute to all those fallen first responders. Other items to cover today, development. I'm still looking for a motion from one of you to say, "Let's put a cork in this bottle." Yesterday was another example. I was assisting the police department in patrol through Sheila Oaks and Woodfield Oaks. I barely had to crawl through between vehicles. And if there would have been a need for a stroke or a heart attack victim, there was no way a fire truck was going to get through a good part of those areas. The reason I mention this is because the setbacks of some of the new homes we have, if you've got a full-size pickup, it's in the sidewalk. And the opportunity for our police and fire to be able to move around is critical. I also liked an update of status for the fifty-three cents versus ninety-eight dollars rental rates on the fields. I'd also like a status as to what we're, where we're at with regard to Camp Weewah and the correction there. As a follow-up to last meeting, the school crossing guards, seventeen fifteen hour, you apply to apopka.net. And with my question last week as well regarding water conservation, I now am clear. Mayor, thank you. Erica Atkinson was most helpful. And the program is basically to reimburse residents if they install more user-friendly sprinkler systems, more friendly user panels to control that, and at fifty percent up to a certain dollar amount for each one, including labor to install. Also, part of the city free, F R E E, will come out and assess your property. I was blessed to have three gentlemen come out, not just one, but Public Service Department, Sewer System and Collection Lines Supervisor Dennis is the utility foreman, as well as Seth and Tyre Utility Service Workers came out and system-checked. Well, it seems overkill with three. Well, Dennis was training the other two in order to be able to accomplish this. In the absence of, right now, they're looking to fill a position that someone can do that. But they identified areas, and I want you to know that Dennis, Seth, and Tyler, I completed all the things you recommended by eight-thirty this morning. I'm still not certain what I'm going to do with the control panel or not, but I don't know. And so I want to call our unsung heroes this week is Dennis, Seth, and Tyler. They did a great job, user-friendly, and it really worked well. I want to thank you for Saturday night sounds. I go on a regular basis. The only couple I've missed is really is great. And speaking of heroes today, I want to recognize Officers Crespo and Brooks for delivering a child. This is just awesome, and I know that's something a fire department does every day, but the police officers don't, and I think it's just quite an honor to do it. So thank you, gentlemen. Take care. Oh, and I forgot to forward those other pictures, so I guess. They had a nice presentation for the Duran family. It was just an incredible experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Albert McKimmy, Golden Gem Road, Apopka. The method of governance in Apopka currently favors a strong mayor. So in essence, much of what the commission and the public propose is viewed by Brian Nelson as being purely ceremonial. However, I would suggest it is still of consequence, as it is indicative of public opinion. Recently, after a complaint by a resident, our mayor has been instructed to answer a complaint by the Ethics Commission. Below that, we have some examples of why we believe this complaint was necessary. I've heard it said that the definition of insanity is to continue to do the same thing over and over and expect a different outcome. Recently, Brian Nelson lied to the commission and residents regarding Michael Regus's employment, for which he received a censure. However, last city hall meeting, appears he lied to the commission and residents about correspondence with Lake County over infrastructure. I have twenty-four pages of correspondence supplied from Lake County, and I've supplied some of that correspondence to the commission today. The important line would be on page one, and I will read what it says. The county has received a proposal from the city of Apopka to provide utilities to a limited service area. This runs contrary to Brian Nelson's public statement in city hall last meeting. There are numerous other examples of what we will term misrepresentation. The letter he sent to Tallahassee with regard to Southwick, which implies he had agreement from the commissioners. His involvement with Rock Springs Ridge Potential Redevelopment. I propose Brian Nelson requires to be censured again. Not only does he require to be censured, I also propose a ceremonial vote of no confidence in our mayor due to his inability to provide leadership and integrity. This city is now involved in numerous lawsuits, which will result in litigation worth millions of dollars. Under Nelson's leadership, we saw the resulting negligent death of a firefighter. The union representing Apopka Fire Department and the city are now at an impasse with the city, it is alleged, employees working at the call center, direct an emergency response, supposedly are paid six dollars per hour more than basic first responders. I also have it on good authority that when Chris Gannon is deposed, he will confirm the allegations that our mayor personally threatened, he would ensure that Gannon Emergencies Solutions would never work in Florida again. Court records also show that Brian Nelson has been called to be deposed in the case being brought forward against the city by Southwick in respects of damages caused to them by the city. This city, under the leadership of Brian Nelson, is continuously embroiled in controversy. We have discrepancies in financial accounting with the city being unable to account for where money is. The placing of thirty-one million dollars at a bank of Brian Nelson's campaign treasurer, David Rankin, and losing approximately nine hundred and forty-five thousand in interest. We have Commissioner Nick Nesta calling for a forensic audit because of potential financial anomalies. We have public record requests investigating city activities that are still being denied to us. So today I am presenting the check to this city, which I have just done to our city clerk, which will allow us access to the ballots the city retains with respect to the election for mayor because of allegations about irregularities in collecting ballots. None of this would be necessary if this administration was honest and transparent. Instead, every meeting, we have disenfranchised, disenchanted members of the public repeating the same narrative. To my mind, we are repeating ourselves week in and week out, not making much progress, not learning from our mistakes. May not constitute insanity, but it's hardly conducive to the reputation of a progressive city offering a better environment for which we want to live. Thank you.
Ace Wood on forty-seven East McNooy Street. Before we get started, I guess today was the proclamation of families here in Apopka. That's awesome. The first thing I want to bring up is the Gillum family in Apopka goes back a decade. I mean decades. And good family, good, defendable, honest people, hardworking. And today, Ms. Gillum, before she passed away, me and her spent many a time together. She spoke of the Boykin family. Today is Ms. Boykin's ninetieth birthday. I just want to tell her happy birthday. Her family's been an influence in South Apopka for many generations. Good family also. So happy birthday, Ms. Boykin. The other thing, yeah, speaking of families, Apopka always, and that's what I've been here every week for, wherever time I get an opportunity, is the families in Apopka is the backbone of Apopka. It stems from the Little Lees. It stems from Pop Warner. It stems, it goes all the way back to the old foliage days, the old folk festivals we used to have at Edwards Field. We're a very tight, trusting community. We trusted in our leadership. We trusted in our neighbors to do the right thing. And we did that. Now, I'm sure there's things behind the walls that we didn't know about sometimes here in, as far as our government goes, everyday activities. But the citizens of Apopka didn't go without. We had great recreational departments. We had great parks. Our streets were clean. Our trash was picked up. We had good water, good sewage system. There wasn't much we needed in Apopka. One McDonald's was good back then. And that was all in fast food restaurants. I can remember, side of the doghouse and a couple other little things. But six years, six and a half years ago, the history of Apopka's changed. The memories will never be the same as they used to be. We got a mayor now that is not upfront with the citizens. He's sitting behind that chair there for his own benefits, not the citizens'. And he even has supervisors that work under him that's following and holding on to his shirt tails. I got proof that our fire chief sent out to every firefighter a letter saying, "My door is always open to you. Trust me. I'm here for you. I work for you. We can make this happen." Chief Wile, it didn't happen. Your door is not open. And it's over eighty-five percent of people, firefighters now, that has no trust in their leadership. And this administration is sitting there letting this happen. You should tuck y'all's tail and run. It's a shame. It's a shame, Mr. Nelson, that your family talk about families. You're ruining your name. You were one of the most respected guys in high school, and you changed it. And you don't give a damn. You look in your face now, don't care one way or the other. So you've ruined a million families here. You've ruined the trust of Apopka. You ruined the trust of the citizens' trust in this government. Please, let's get this back. Do the right thing.
Good afternoon. Todd Lanfair, twenty-five La Grande Via Lane. Thank you so much, Mayor, Commissioners. Appreciate you all and appreciate the fact that you allow us to minister and to meet needs in our community. And now we have a need. I serve as the Vice President for Government Relations for City Serve International and run City Serve Florida. And many of you know what we do with City Serve, and that is we meet needs. We resource local churches and ministries so that they can become the heroes in their community. And we love partnering with our city, the needs that we, we've been given with our, with our fire department, we've been able to give every single fire department brand-new chairs and leather recliner seats so our, our finest can relax when they're, when they're not saving us. And we've been able to do so much in our community, whether it's in South Apopka. I think Commissioner Smith, one of your members, we did an extreme home makeover from top to bottom. And that's what we do with City Serve, just to let you know what we do with City Serve. And we found ourselves in a position a couple of months ago to where our warehouse was taken out from underneath us. Now, we don't charge. Everything we do is free. In the last two years, we've given out over ten million dollars' worth of resources to the local ministries here in central Florida. And that's not counting the tens of millions we gave out during the pandemic with the Farmer's to Family Food Box Program. So I just say that to say not to pat anyone on the back or to highlight, but to say, without a warehouse, we've had to stop all that. And so I'm going to ask if you would, last year, you were gracious enough to give us a contract for the warehouse on twenty-eight Lush, twenty-eight hundred Lush Road. And I'm going to ask you to reinstate that, to revive that, to renew it. About a year ago, we didn't know we'd be in the situation we're in now. But because we don't have that warehouse, and because I'm not in a position to pay fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a month for a warehouse, we're having everything that I get, I have to send out. In the last two months, I've sent out over two million dollars' worth of resources to the other parts of the state. Jockey gave me one and a half million dollars of brand-new clothing for our area right here, but I didn't know where to put it, and so had to give it out. So what I'm saying to you is, I'm not sure all the process or how this works or how it goes, but we really could use that facility on twenty-eight hundred Lush Road. It is an eyesore. On the highway now, we'll make that thing look like it's supposed to look and to be an actual jewel for our community. So with that, thank you for listening to me. Thank you for considering helping us out with this warehouse.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, everyone in their rightful place. I just want to say thank you, and please understand, I'm not going to mention other names because of my bad experience. I want to focus on the positive. I had an incident at my house where the city of Apopka was doing work for one of my neighbors and did damage to my property. Went back and forth with Public Works. They told me it was end of the fiscal year. Then they didn't have any money to do the repairs. I had to wait for the new fiscal year. The new fiscal year came. Then I was stalled. They weighed in. They couldn't get a P O sign. Went back and forth. I'm not going to mention all the names of who I went through because that's the negative part. However, I reached out to Blanche, and she stepped up. And the reason why I'm publicly thanking her, because many people may say, hey, she did her job. She gets paid to do her job. But every one of us, we do what's expected of us, and a lot of times, we don't get thank yous. And thank yous can also help, help make us do better at our job. So I just want to thank Blanche. The minute I spoke to her and explained my situation, what's going on with finances of city of Apopka, I'm at every meeting. I see the budget. I know we have money. So why can't I get the repairs that was done, which had nothing to do with me? I didn't cause it, didn't ask for it. And within, Blanche said, "I'll take care of it." And within two days, all the work was done to satisfaction. Pictures were taken. So I just want to let Blanche know, I greatly appreciate you. Continue doing a great job. I know there, like with any organization, with any city, including city of Apopka, there's always room for improvement, but there are some people here, including our city council, who are doing a great job. So I wanted to just publicly thank Blanche for what she did.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Reyes, and as a reminder, I am the owner of the fitness company, The Oak. We do fitness, nutrition, and community. And to share with you guys our next two community events, because they are so close together, which was my fault. We have the Turkey Trot Fund Run, five K and ten K. And again, that's a community event. All citizens are welcome, hopefully in and outside of Apopka. But that is on November eighteenth, starting at eight AM. If you don't feel like running a five K or ten K on purpose, unless someone's chasing you, there is a fun run option that is about a mile and a quarter. So that gives accessibility to any and all levels that want to come out and just enjoy the community and the atmosphere. And then our next one is in December, and it's a Christmas themed one. It's called Twelve Ks of Christmas. Again, twelve K might sound daunting because it's about seven and a half miles, but I am setting that event up, also as a community event, to be split up. If you would like to team up with other people and run different legs of the twelve K, you can split up the entire course with a team. And you can dress up in Christmas-style outfits to run the race. But the next one that is coming up in a few weeks is the Turkey Trot Fund Run, five K and ten K. And I wanted to invite the community, invite all of council as well.
What was the date for the December?
Oh, my. I'm sorry.
What was the December date?
December sixteenth is the twelve K. Twelve Ks of Christmas is the full one, if you want to be fun with it. And then the Turkey Trot is November eighteenth, coming up in a few weeks. TheOakCommunity.com. It's the website.
And where is the races at?
All at Northwest Rec.
What time?
Eight AM.
Ooh.
I love these questions. These are great. Anything else? Are you all going to team up together?
I think that's a good idea. That is a great idea.
I'll have Dick Nesta run for all of us.
Yeah, have him run ninety-five, ninety-five percent of it, and then you just run through the finish line.
I think it's a good idea.
Right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Is that it? Okay. On the consent agenda, we've got seven items, but we need to pull item number five. So look for a motion to approve the six, one through five, excuse me, one through four, and then six and seven.
Why are we pulling that one?
Why are we pulling that one?
Some people want some more information about it.
Okay.
I had asked if the professional services strengthening our sons, which I think is a good program, to make a short presentation so that our public
Understands what's right. Very cool.
All right. Look for motion to approve items one through four, six and seven.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Name is Lee. Next up, Michael, come on down.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Mike Ortiz. I'm the program supervisor for the Street Division. And today, we'll be going over the action plan for the Piedmont Lake subdivision in regards to the tree removal and restoration and repair to the sidewalks, aprons, and curbs. So here's a quick topics that we've been going over in the presentation, historical perspective, what work was completed last year, the action plan, the methods and steps that we will take in this action plan, and then the assessment for each phase and a quick summary. So historical recap. So the biggest issue in this neighborhood is the type of tree that was planted in between the right-of-way and between the road and the sidewalk. The tree grew very large in this confined space, negatively impacting the sidewalks, curbs, and driveway aprons. Another issue is the trees are nearing the end of their lifespan. There's a lot of trees in the assessment that were deemed critical and poor condition. And a quick summary of the last presentation we had last council meeting of the plan of replanting trees and where the trees were removed. And the chosen tree was the Little Gem one, which should be $100 each tree. So this is a work history of all the trees. The first one is the locations, the number of trees that were removed per location, the prices for each one, and that includes the tree removal, the tree stump, and root grinding as well. And the total amount that we spent for just tree removals was $7,044. And then note, we did do some sidewalk, apron, and curbs restoration. We couldn't do all of them due to budgets, but we will address them this fiscal year. There's some of the concrete repairs that we did too in the subdivision as well. And it was, again, the sidewalk, curbs, and aprons, and the total amount was $12,415. And then we did do a cul-de-sac over there in Fresh Metal Court, and that consisted the whole cul-de-sac, which we removed three trees. That was $4,296. And then some concrete repairs that we did for the sidewalk, aprons, curbs, and gutter. I did put labor there because I want to kind of just highlight that. Each case-by-case will be different, which comes down to the roots, depending on how bad it is to grind them down and remove them. And then the total amount for that section was $30,754 in the total with the trees. And the concrete work was $35,052.45. In total, with all the past two presentations of the slides, the total amount was $54,512.25 that we spent in just Piedmont Lakes alone last year. So this is the action plan, and basically it's composed of breaking the subdivision into four different phases. Each phase will have a study of broken sidewalks, curbs, aprons, and dead trees, and then an estimated price for repair and removal. And then also, a notice will be given to each residence before we proceed in the process of doing the restoration and repairs and removal. So these are the steps that will be taken that took place in this action plan. We evaluated all the trees and damaged sidewalks, curbs, and aprons. Then the second step will be to remove the trees that are deemed dead or in critical condition, grind all of the roots, repair all the damaged sidewalks, curbs, and aprons, restore all the areas where the work was performed, AKA like restoring sod. And then afterwards, the next fiscal year, replant trees in '24, '25. And then the tree selection that we've done was helped with an arborist. She went out, did a study, and deemed which trees were in critical condition or in poor condition that were safety risk. And then the damaged sidewalk was done by city staff, and I'll give an example of what we were looking for and assessing later on in the PowerPoint. So these are typical costs that we have from past jobs that we've done in the city. And then it shows you different diameters per pricing, and that includes the removal, the grinding as well. And then the square footage of pricing that we got from our contractor, concrete contractors, that they've given us in the past too. And then these are examples that we look for when we went throughout the whole subdivision. And I want to focus on the last one. As you can see, the root system's a little bit more greater. So that's why I highlighted labor a little bit, because each case-by-case could be different. So this is just an estimate, so there might be some fluctuation in pricing.
Can I, just one moment. The last one where that sidewalk is really raised? And you said that's the one where there's a root protruding from it?
Yes.
So you have to wait until the root kind of dies?
No. So the process will be to, we're going to have to take out the sidewalk and then grind it down completely so we can get it leveled out again, and then report and reform the sidewalk.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So this is a quick summary for Phase One. And we found the number of broken sidewalks was 73, broken curbs eight, aprons 25, total dead trees 19, and then total cost was $106,543.90. We did add a contingency just for that cost of labor that may occur. Also, during the removal of the trees, there may be additional broken sidewalk that the contractor might impose. And then also, the legends I have in the last slide, but I just want to highlight for sidewalks, the red dots are the sidewalks. For curbs, they're going to be the orange dots, the aprons are the yellow dots, and then the green dots are the trees. But I will have a legend at the very end in the summary. So this is the Phase One assessment. The Phase Two assessment, sidewalk 74, curbs 11, apron 24, trees 10, and the total amount was $90,661.80 with a contingency of 20 again. The next phase, we had 60 for the sidewalk, curbs 10, aprons 27, trees 15, and the total cost of repair and removal for this one was $100,652.30 with a contingency of 20 again. And then Phase Four, we had a total of 35, curbs seven, aprons 10, trees six, and the total cost of repair for this phase was $42,951 with a contingency of 20% again. Now, this is a total phase breakdown of the overall project. For each phase, the total cost is $340,809, and we added contingency again to make a grand total of $408,970.80. Now, I just want to highlight something very interesting in the study that we did. If you look at the last phase, you can see less dots. And then also, the cost of repair was minimized greatly. And that is due to the tree locations that were done in that phase and the tree selections as well. Just want to highlight the importance in that aspect when, you know, that has a big impact on the curbs and asphalt, I mean, and curbs sidewalks. So this is our budget that we have for the whole city for tree removals and sidewalks. We do want to take some consideration with this because we do have other projects and other issues in other areas in the city, just not in Piedmont Lakes. We want to just focus on doing one phase this year and then replanting trees the next phase, and then following again next year, doing an additional phase, and then replanting again next year and so forth until we complete the whole total of the subdivision. And then that was our expectations. I kind of jumped again a little bit. But it's pretty much. Before we start with questions, I do want to take the, thank the public service team for this, and especially the sewer department in helping out, get the points with the GPS tool. Dio, Vera, and Josh also reviewing the PowerPoint after I finish it. So with that, I'm hoping to any questions.
Any questions for Michael?
First, I want to say thank you. I mean, this is a really good presentation. This will help because you have different individuals, residents from that area that either contacting one of us, you know, because there's a problem. But this actually outlines the entire community. So you have Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, and Phase Four. Can you tell me where we will be with Phase Four? You know, is that like each phase is one budget year or?
Yes. So each phase will be per each year. So this year, fiscal '23, '24, we'll focus on completing all the issues in Phase One.
Within the next like four years?
Yeah. Then every year, we'll go to the next phase. And then the tree planting will be followed up the following year after. So for example, this year, we do all the repairs and removals on fiscal year '23, '24. Year fiscal '24, '25, we do the tree replanting for the ones that were removed. And then we do Phase Two as well as the removal and repair for the trees.
So being out of order, will you, do you have like really, because obviously it's broken down in four phases, but let's say somebody really urgently needs a tree removed from Phase Four, will they be able to be out of order?
Yes, they could be out of order. Any safety issues will be taken care of. And then if we do go and remove that tree, we will also try to repair the sidewalks surrounding it as well. Definitely will, you know, consistently still drive the area and make any like safety corrections that we need to make with the trees.
Yeah. Well, I would, you know, I'm really thankful that the city has taken the responsibility for this particular community with the oak trees on the right-of-ways. Will this be on the city website so that the residents can see where they're at in the phases?
Yeah, we could post it on the city website so everybody can see where we're at. And also be providing the information to the HOA as well to put it on his board for their community to see as well.
So I just want to say thank you, and thank you to Mr. Dio Dot. I know this took a lot, but I'm going to keep up with it. And again, and as you, I guess as you finish or as you deal with the certain phases, you will update it on the website, right?
Yes. Yeah, I could say Phase One, we completed. Now we're moving over to Phase Two. Communication is going to be key here for the whole residents. I know this is going to be a big process, and we want to make sure everybody's informed and also, you know, feel that they're supported and that they're by themselves in this process.
And I know they have a very strong HOA, and he was here last, the last council meeting. Yeah. So I know he will stay on top of this also. Again, I just want to say thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you for the work, and certainly this is a great presentation.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Becker? Yeah, you answered it already. Commissioner Velasquez's point, I mean, obviously, the plan is the plan. But if there's, we always have to pivot if there's priority issues, safety issues. So regardless of what phase, if something presents itself, you all will pivot.
Yes.
And then kind of horse trade, you know, trees or what have you, sidewalk repair on a given budget perspective. I did want to take the opportunity real quick before I yield the rest is, Mr. Buda had called you out the last meeting. I didn't have a chance to come on over the top with it because we transitioned to a business. But I wanted to echo his points on how much, you know, there's been multiple times where you've interacted with community members that I've forwarded along, and all of them have been fairly highly praiseworthy of your efforts, your follow-through, and just their general interaction with you. So I do want to pass along that praise. So thank you for the job that you're doing.
Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate it.
Mr. Smith? How did you determine which phase would be one, two, three, or four?
So I looked at the layout of the whole subdivision and kind of broke it off so it could be equal in size. So we could have at least a pretty even amount of money spent throughout each phase so we could have enough funding for it, and then just tackle, you know, just tackle it like that.
And so, and the tree budget, where is that derived from?
So it was approved in the beginning of the year for the whole city. So that's our whole overall city fiscal, yeah, that's our whole budget for the whole.
Well, I guess that wasn't my question. I mean, when people are developing land and they pay into their tree fund, is this where this fund is totally funded?
No, the commissioner, the removal of the trees and the sidewalks, that comes out of your general fund.
No, but he's talking about the trees.
But the trees, replacement of the trees will come out of your tree bank.
So the replacement of the tree will come out of the tree bank?
The actual tree itself, yes.
And so is the tree bank going to be able to sustain this all four years?
You actually at the last meeting set aside some money?
$25,000.
To replace the trees, and we've got some money in there if we need to go back and get more. So basically, we're encumbering 216 out of the tree bank for this fiscal year, of which that encumbrance is what we're deriving Phase One payment for the trees that are being replaced in Phase One. Yes, sir.
No, actually, the, that budget's
I see his head shaking.
Yeah, this budget's actually for us, the Street Division. So the tree budget, I think, is Parks and Recs. And this one is just the whole city and the Street Department in doing the whole city of just removals and canopy raising and other things like that.
Just the replacement, as I think you mentioned before, comes out of the tree bank. In the street's budget, as Michael just mentioned, we have funds allocated for the removal and all the other stuff. But the replacement can be funded by the tree bank.
And that's what I was, that's what I was saying. If I wasn't communicating. So basically, we have a pot of money called the tree bank.
Yes.
For tree replacement for this fiscal year, there's the $216,000 that are allocated to tree replacement, where the 216 is for removal and just removal.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you. Good.
Okay.
Mr. Nasty? No, definitely thank you to your team and you for knocking this out and taking such a deep dive in this. It's very helpful to us, having conversations with the residents to explain it correctly. So I appreciate what you guys have done. It really helps a lot. And I don't want to get too caught in the weeds, but having been on, I've had a lot of contractors cut down trees, do a lot of stump grinding, especially close to houses, things like that. So it can be complex, and I've had a lot of bad things happen personally. So when we, some of these sidewalks are all, I mean, you can look in the pictures, how far onto somebody's property are we going to be replacing cement, things like that, or not at all?
So we only are in charge of the right-of-way, so we'll do all the sidewalks and driveway aprons. But then from there, it's going to be the homeowner's responsibility from there.
So if there's a substantial difference, you know, the root is raising up the owner's side of their driveway, and we're fixing our side, it's still, it kind of creates a safety hazard. Is there something we can do to mitigate that when that comes up?
So I know contractors, when we've done this before, do offer a pretty good discount because we're out there doing the job, so he can speak to them. But as far as that aspect, I have to get with my director and get back to you on that.
Okay. Yeah, because I just, just from looking at the picture, I think that's going to be kind of an ongoing issue. I mean, we're probably hitting 60 to 7% of houses within this community. So I just want to make sure that that's, it, things are going to come up. So I just want to, if we can help out the homeowners a little bit here, a little bit there, you know, I think it's well worth it. But again, thank you. I appreciate it. And we're starting this yesterday?
So we're trying to do this in the beginning of 2024. I still got to get some financial items taken care of, and then set up meetings with contractors to see their scheduling. Also, walk the whole subdivision and point out the problem areas that we want them to focus on. So once I get that going, then we're projecting to start at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
How are you guys doing? Thank you so much. Haley Smith on Dodge Court. I want to thank them for that presentation as well. It's super informative. I'm curious about the nine trees that are already gone. Are those going to be in the replacement pot?
Yeah, they can be.
Okay. And then we met, the HOA met two nights ago, and Bob Elmquist had mentioned that the tree choice had changed. So I just want that on the record, that they were going with the elm tree instead of the magnolia tree. Thank you.
That's interesting. Okay.
That wasn't on.
Yeah, that wasn't on this, so they changed.
It used to have the magnolia, but yeah, it's changed to the drake elm.
Oh, so they changed it? Okay, I'm sorry. I wasn't aware of that.
Wing elm is a little more canopy-like than the magnolia is a little more vertical.
Yeah, they gave them like five options, so they just chose, but we do have other options.
So it's, yeah, she's right. It's a winged elm is the replacement.
Is there a price difference on that then?
I'm not sure.
I would think if anything, it's cheaper. It won't be more expensive.
It would be helpful to know that number, though.
All right. Anybody else? Not closed public hearing, look for a motion to approve the Phase One action plan for the Piedmont Lake subdivision involving the removal of dead trees and repairing broken sidewalks, curbs, and aprons.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Take my Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Do we need to put it, change the magnolia to elm?
It's just, I think it's not, it's part of the plan. Yeah, we're good.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. With the changes of the making an elm tree versus a magnolia. Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3025.
Ordinance number 3025. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from rural settlement to mixed use for a portion of certain real property generally located east of Golden Gem Road. west of State Road four twenty-nine and south of Isle Royal Place. Owned by Albert McKimmy, Susan Acastio, Christopher Cosby Johnson, comprising twenty acres more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Good afternoon, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is her request, accept the first reading of ordinance number three zero two five, approving the future land use amendment for three five eight five and three six zero two Golden Gem Road. Changing the future land use designation from rural settlement to mixed use. The subject. Apologies, three six zero three Golden Gem Road. The properties are located east of Golden Gem Road, west of State Road four twenty-nine and south adjacent of Parkview Preserve subdivision. Approximately twenty acres in size. It's been determined that the subject properties may be considered to be part of the Kelly Park Interchange Form Based Code area based on the following reasons unique to the properties. A future land use designation to allow a density of up to five dwelling units per acre justified to maintain continuity with the surrounding area to the north and buffered by existing uses to the south. The properties are the southern, southernmost terminus of the KPI one mile radius. The city's storm water retention pond located to the east and south uses are present. The Hubbard Construction Solid Waste Facility is directly to the west. Orange County's waste site is to the southwest and no other opportunities are available for this property, for these properties to connect to the KPI. There are nine findings listed in section two point five point one D of the Land Development Code in determining whether or not the proposed future land use amendment is to be adopted. The applicant has provided responses to these items. So their position and staff has, has provided responses as well. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on October tenth, twenty twenty-three. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the future land use amendment subject to the findings in the staff report exhibits. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number three, three zero two five and hold it over for second reading and adoption on November fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for staff?
No, I mean, for the record, all parties are aware that obviously increased density is going to impact traffic infrastructure, school infrastructure, all infrastructure, and everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, but I just, I, I got an email from our county commissioner that said the county and the city are in negotiations for the city of Apopka to take the Golden Gem Road.
No, that's not, that's not correct. We're taking it from the north side from.
It's my understanding that from the south and the south terminus of that, of our improvement, it starts in Capitol Reef Way, which is in the Parkview subdivision going north. So.
Okay. Do, do you want to kind of elaborate on that?
Hi, Jim, I'm the Community Development Director. Yeah, Pam Richmond is working on a, a design for that portion from Capitol Ridge Way, which is the northern, northern entrance going into Park, uh, Parkview Preserve, going north up to Kelly Park Road. And we, we don't have a timeline as to when that will actually occur or, or, or finish. But at that stage, once we get that and the cost, then, then we'll be talking with the county regarding the road itself.
Okay.
Just real quick, um, and back in the end of June this year, I had sent a letter to, uh, to the, the applicants regarding this, uh, this proposed use or proposed change. And one of the concerns that we had was regarding a, a road network throughout the KPI. Uh, we do not know whether or not, uh, the developer of the northern portion will be able to connect in the back portion to provide that connection feature. There, there's also, uh, for those of you that have looked at the aerial itself, there is a power line there. A lot of times when going, going to five units per acre does not mean you get a full five units per acre because you do have to take into account roadways and power lines. Power lines cannot be, you can't use the density from the power lines and the rest of the property. So, um, we, we don't have a prospectus. We don't have a, a general design plan yet for the, for the, for the property itself to be able to connect in. But this is a, what I, what I had looked at, it was a, a natural terminus for the KPI because, because of the surrounding properties with the Hubbard Construction, Orange County, uh, dump across the street. And then the, um, and then the retention ponds that the county, that the city has on the, on the east and on the south. So the, the confines of the property itself are, you, you can't do this anywhere else in the city because you don't have those same types of conditions in the area. But again, the main thing that we were concerned about was the road network, uh, come, going into the property itself. With, uh, with the density that's proposed, um, or the resulting density, uh, there would have to be two access points. So whether or not it goes into the north or whether or not they can get two access points going on to, uh, Golden Gem, we have yet to see with, uh, with the plan itself.
So to, and if I can just have you clarify that.
Sure.
You're saying that because there's power lines and things like that, they, they couldn't do an apartment complex or they couldn't do townhomes? Is that what you're saying? Because they can't scrunch all that into one or is that what you're saying or no?
Because the, uh, the, the, the neighborhood district only allows single family. So that is the only thing that they can do as single family, which is similar to what would be, um, on the north side.
Gotcha. Okay.
Preserve is.
So regardless, they can't say, okay, we're going to do some single family and then use the rest of our density for.
Correct.
Just to max out. Okay, understood. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I got a couple for you. Jim, I, I know that at some point way back when they were talking about the other, the project just north, they were trying to connect or, or combine the properties to, to, that would fit the need or the KPI, the, the true definition of.
True.
The, the property had to be within the KPI. And then any, any properties attached is, is a part of another, a bigger development. So how does this meet that guideline? This is obviously outside of the KPI.
It, it, it's outside, it is outside the, the area. And when Ryan Holmes had approached us, um, for that original connection, this was after they had actually gotten their plans approved. What we had told them was that they would actually have to come in and amend their, their MDP and their construction site plan and in order to be able to do that. And they basically did not want to do that. They wanted to have it as a standalone project. So we did tell them no at that stage. Once the project, and this is, uh, kind of formulating what is going on out in the Kelly Park Interchange. But once, once we saw that this was a confined location, you cannot expand the KPI any farther than this. The, the Form Based Code does allow us some discretion in regards to that expansion going as far as what this would be because there's a, because of the retention ponds and the dumps over on the, on the west and in the south and on the east. So it's a confined location. Um, I do not know why, uh, you know, the, the options were there at that time for, for Ryan Holmes to be able to do that and whether or not they, um, are looking at this. Right now, they only have the front phase, uh, that's, uh, basically the roads are all in. Uh, so they still have phase two in the backside. So if they decided that they did want to take this, they could do a back entrance off of one of their main roads, uh, in the existing subdivision down the north. And then have a, have another, uh, another exit coming out, um, or exit and entrance coming out onto Golden Gem itself.
Okay, next question, the, from what I gather, the, the cost up to the point where we're looking at taking over Golden Gem Road. I heard a number of eight million dollars that the county would need to, to, to fund to get the road up to what we will be going north from, from there. Is that an accurate number? And then do we go to the county and say, hey, you need to, you need to get your road up to the city standards, which, which includes stormwater and, and also widening the road and, and improving it or, or where is that?
It's probably in that, in that realm. Once we get the, uh, the, the, the study done with the curb gutter sidewalks, they're going to have to, a lot of times with this, with this type of road, they can't just do a milling. They actually have to do some, uh, core samples to see what the base is actually out there. And right now it's, uh, it's not looking great. Um, so I mean, we're, we're looking closer for that, for our portion, probably closer about eleven, eleven million right now. And then the portion going to the south, um, it's, it's already been widened and smoothed out because that, that was the main, uh, truck transport, uh, road going to the south from the dumps going down to Pond Can. So, uh, we don't know what kind of condition that's in yet.
So as a condition of approving this, at some point, we got some more steps to go through. Can we, can we ask that they do it or the county improve that road? Or is we, are we just letting them build these homes without any subsequent improvements of that road?
We don't, we don't have any control over that portion of the road. So that would definitely be Orange County in terms of any other improvements.
And so then how, what's the, what kind of transportation impact fees would this generate based on the five units per acre?
I, I do not have those. I'm sorry.
Jean, you got any idea? How many, well, how many units and then just multiply what's our?
It's about two hundred units total. Um, if it was two hundred, it's five units per acre. Um, so you're, you're looking.
How many?
Oh, I'm sorry, about a hundred units.
Yeah, minus the, minus the.
Less, thank you, for, 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 uh, uh, school. But, um, yeah, about a hundred units less the, um, the area for roadways, less the area for the, um, uh, for the power lines themselves. We don't know what that, usually it's about fifty, fifty-five feet out from the power lines themselves. And it's a, it crosses the whole front of the property.
So how many, what, what's our kind of a, give me a ballpark, how many? And then what's our impact fee, transportation impact fee? So just, just looking for a round numbers, how much that would generate?
I don't have that. I. For transportation.
So fifteen hundred times.
Probably eighty to eighty-five units or so.
So. A million, million, two, that.
Right around there.
Million and a half dollars. Okay, okay, okay. So.
And that's going to go in our pot to.
Correct.
Improve the Kelly Park transportation system. Yeah.
The, the.
Correct. That's what Pam and I have, have discussed.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Jean or for, for Jim? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Come on up.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Mayor. Long time no see.
Yes.
And Commissioners, good to meet you. Um, the question about the, the, the concentric ring that we've called.
I'm sorry, your name, sir?
I'm Christopher Johnson. I'm the owner of thirty-six oh three.
Okay.
Uh, the concentric ring that we've seen as the KPI designation, specifically your policy of the Form Based Code twenty point five says, um, and I'll quote, it says, "The location and or boundaries of the character zones shown on the vision plan are illustrative only." So, um, that's why it says that it's up to the planning department to make the call. And that's where we proved our point and kind of brought to them evidence showing that we are developmentally isolated and it can't go beyond us because of the property owned around us by the city of Apopka, which we felt keeps from us becoming an enclave. And if you start talking to some of the property owners out near Oviedo that have a pig farm next to their place, they've been having issues that they're bringing to the city council, asking them to please give them some reason and some, uh, a movement to get rid of the rural subdivision next to them. So, uh, we would ask the same for future use. We do not currently have a buyer, but we have the future land use provide somebody the ability to providing you a subdivision overlay with the details that you've been asking about entrances, exits, roads, et cetera, in the future. And, uh, we, we'd like to have that. That's why we're pursuing the land use that we're looking for.
So I know that one point that I know that the, the owner of the property north had talked to you about combining. So what, why didn't that happen, which would have.
He evidently had a conversation, he, two, two reasons. He had a conversation, um, with the planning department and his conversation with me led me to believe that because he's a very important person and they're a big home builder, that he'd just be able to push this through and get agreement that, uh, of course we'd receive the whatever land use we want and whatever zoning we want. And when he was informed that he was going to have to go through the process like everybody else, he canceled the contract on me within about fifteen minutes of hearing that. Uh, the secondary reason is that dealing with home builders versus developers, home builders, um, tend to delay their closings for years. And his particular contract called for a ten-year guarantee to close. I'm sorry, I'd like to close sometime before I'm way past my retirement, um, on this property.
Any other questions? Anybody else wants to speak?
Thank you.
Albert McKimmy, Golden Gem Road. As you're aware, Golden Jeb Road has been a bone of contention for mine for, for some considerable time. However, I believe that what we're asking to do is conducive to the whole of the Kelly Park Exchange. Inasmuch as that the pioneering agreement limited how much work the city were prepared to do when they took over Orange County's obligation to Golden Gem Road and limit it down to, as it was said just now, Parkview Preserve. We're directly next door to Parkview Preserve. And if we fail to upgrade Golden Gem Road down to the area that's currently been widened and was part of, uh, the, for, for a better word, the dump that winded, we would be creating a bottleneck between there and Parkview Preserve. Our property is only about six or seven hundred feet, uh, wide. And that would connect Parkview Preserve to the wider part of the road. So the amount of impact fees that we would generate if we were allowed to have a future land use there is going to reduce the requirement of the city to, to supply funds for that. So for that reason, you know, I, I don't think it's hypocritical to, to, to ask for you to consider the, uh, our, our application because it will help the city.
So we're going to spend eight million on a road that we're going to get a million and a half dollars for. How, how does that compute? I mean, have you gotten any, any assurances from the county that they'll?
With due respect, Mayor, that's your obligation to find that. You've, at this particular moment in time.
I'm just asking a question.
Well, I, I'm answering your question. Yep. This city has allowed for about nine or ten thousand homes and the Kelly Park Road, there's currently about four thousand homes on Golden Gem Road that this city has passed. So for you to imply that a hundred homes is going to make a radical difference that we're applying for, I don't know. I can't answer the question as to why you haven't managed to agree with, with Orange County at this particular moment in time. But my comment is, if you have ten or twelve thousand homes that you've already agreed for in the area, you guys started the pioneering agreement. If you fail to get the pioneer, pioneer agreement to, to be, uh, include Golden Gem Road, that's not my fault as a resident. That's your inability to deal with things.
So, so you, you've come to us, I don't know, six, eight, ten, twelve times to tell us that we need to improve Golden Gem. And so now we've got, we're looking at a million and a half bucks that we've got to fix an eight million dollar problem.
With due respect, Mayor, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense because you're going to have to fix Golden Gem Road irrespective of my property. You already have pictures that I gave you last week with a school bus and a lorry and it's impossible for them to pass. So at some point or other, you are going to be responsible for fixing Golden Gem Road. I'm not asking you to fix my part of the road because the impact fees will more than cover that.
All right, okay. All right, thank you. Anybody, any questions for Mr. McKimmy?
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I wasn't going to respond to nothing else today, but Mayor Land, I'm Mayor Land, I wish he was here. Mayor Nelson, very out of line. And the reason I say this, Commissioners, listen to me. We were talking about Golden Gem Road a year ago before this was ever presented. And now you want to ask him how he's going to pay the eight million dollars? That's ridiculous. Who's going to fix the road at Kingsland and all that? What about the runoff there? What about the other roads around here? You won't ask, just because someone's built a home on a road that's county or city owned? You want them to pay to fix the road? Who, how about Mayflower? Who's fixing that? Is it company or is it city? We are the city. I can't even believe he's trying to stab the man in the back that way. How low?
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Rolling Hills Lane. You, you've hit some of the points, but I'm concerned with the aspect of we keep, in my opinion, rubber stamping new develops as they roll in. We've got hundreds of homes going in along Golden Gem. And as a friend of mine described it, it's basically a cattle path. We address schools. You, Mayor, and the Commissioners at the time, several years ago, went before Orange County Public Schools. And the only reason we have Kelly Park School right now is. County Public Schools and the only reason we have Kelly Park School right now is because we made a concerted effort to do so. Because we're one of the fastest growing areas in Orange County, we enjoy more people moving in. 100 homes, or if it's 85 homes in this area, requires a shorter setback, which means pickup trucks are parking across the, across the sidewalk and people are parking in the streets, which inhibits the ability of our first responders to get to people timely. Thank you.
All right, anybody else public want to speak? All right, now we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion.
Just a couple of comments, I mean. I, I get the questions, Mayor, but you know, this has been at the staff level for, for some time. And you're, you oversee staff, so I'm just curious as to the disconnect between the interpretation of your, of your community development director, and it sounds like you are, are disjointed, so I just wanted to understand that, that bit. Because he's making an interpretation and we're getting the staff recommendations, the stuff that you lead to approve this. So I'm just wondering what the, what the disconnect is there. I mean, to ask a question about how much, like, impact fees this is going to generate? I mean, I would have thought that that's a question.
Whenever you, whenever you do a land use or zoning, zoning amendment, those are questions that do typically come up from, from council or from planning commission.
Do you not present this to the mayor as your, as your boss?
He also.
Say, hey, this is.
Yes, but he also asked, just like you would, for any other land use amendment, whether it affects schools or whether it affects the taxes or whether it affects roads. You all get a chance to ask those in, in, in a public forum and you all do typically ask those different types of questions.
It's not typical from the seat in the middle, but okay, all right.
So the, the one thing I found interesting was that we're asking the resident. We ask for the impact fees, which is a million and a half or a little bit more. And then there's eight million dollars to, to bring the road up to our city standards. But we're asking the resident, what's his responsibility to that? It's not his responsibility, it belongs to the county, right? The road?
That portion, yeah.
So we, so we as the city, if we approve his request, it's not his responsibility, the road. We then now have to go to the county and say, you have to bring that road up to city standards, am I correct?
Well, we still want the county to bring the road up to standards. I think the mayor's clarification was just how much money are we going to get from this particular project to go towards the, the portion that we got?
Is there any relevance to that?
Sure, you, you want to know.
Do we compare, but he's got impact fees, so what would those impact fees be? It would, it would upgrade the streets that, that comes with that property, that parcel, am I correct?
It does, it's on, the impact fees for transportation go towards our viable roads.
Okay.
So what the clarification was, is how much more money can we put towards that eight or 11 million dollar project that we've got with this particular project?
So, but then it's our responsibility to get, to, to really, to go to the county for that then?
We're, we, we always go to the county and, and ask them for, to be able to fix up roads that they have control over. And we do the same for ours.
Why are we asking the resident, what's his contribution to the road?
It's.
But this is just an entitlement issue because really there's no impact fees paid until development.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
So my assumption, not to.
No, that's correct.
My assumption is entitlement is achieved, the land is sold, the developer that comes to develop the property will pay the impact.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. So.
Thank you.
The eight million dollars for the road is, is not his responsibility.
No, you know, like I said, I, I think what the mayor was looking for is how much will this particular project be able to contribute if it's developed? That's a viable question.
Should we ask that of every project that comes before us?
I've seen it happen before.
That's an interesting inquiry and.
Sure. Well, it's like, it's just, the way I look at it is it's, it's probably the same thing as, as Mr. Olson brings up regarding schools. What kind of impact is it going to have with the schools?
Well, I think, Mr. Olson, what he, he's, he's doing is reminding us that as we approve the developments, these are the unintentional consequences and he wants to keep reminding us and that's okay.
Just like roads, we have, we've got impact on roads, we've got impact on schools, we've got impact on sidewalks. Every, every development we have has an impact, whether it's personnel, needs for personnel or needs for infrastructure. Like, I think you've all mentioned that multiple times for, for, for me.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Let me just ask you, the, the last data that you gave us in reference to the amount of development we have occurring, are we keeping a record as well as to the impact on the schools so that we know when we get to that percentage that they said that we have to have in overcrowding, that then we can go before the county again and demand a school in our area?
That's, that's what we, that's what the school board does.
But who oversees to make sure that they're giving us a fair shot?
The school board does that. We can't compute every pupil in that, we can, we can add, we can take what we do for the, for the, for the concurrency, for the capacity and then the concurrency, the, the payment into the system. But the school board also has records for Orange County developments. So that's where we've got to keep track of that and get the information from the school board and from their planning staff to see where they are in regards to the overcapacity issue for all of our schools. At that stage, that's when we go to town in regards to the request for.
Yeah, so that's what I'm asking, are we keeping an eye on that so we know?
We talk to the school board every week.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
That's a fair question, I think if we could get just a number, kind of where we are.
We can find out.
Because we, we know we got to be overcapacity by a certain percentage.
Yes, sir.
In order to get the new school, but we, we want to know when we get there so that as we did before, we can go back before the school board and say, all right, we at that point, what's the plan?
Well, to that end, I mean, school member board, or bird, sent us an enrollment capacity data today.
Yep.
I had, you know, after Mr. Olson had sent his latest round of advocacy via email on this topic, I reached out to her and just to restate my understanding. And that, that is, if there's a point of great, great concern by what our actions here in the city of Apopka are doing as a collective board to OCPS or as her as the, as the representative within our specific area, my assumption is that there would be a, a very purposeful communication to this collective board. And that was answered in the affirmative. Now, there's a lot of ebb and flow that happens in some of these enrollments. I mean, some of her feedback was that there's some schools that were not as to the enrollment levels that they were expecting, some were under what they were expecting.
Yep.
Like we've discussed here in the past, I think it's 110% or 120% or something like that before they build new schools. It's, that's a policy of theirs, can't change that. But no, I would be highly respectful if OCPS came to us and said, City of Apopka, you're, you're causing undue stress, or you're causing undue stress on us and our ability to keep up with you. And we haven't received that communication or I have not personally.
Correct, yeah. And a lot of times even just with the, they call it rezoning because I don't, I like, I don't like using rezoning for schools, but when they, when they, when the latest, when the Kelly Park School came online, that of course pulled students from a couple of other districts or different areas within the school board district. So that, that ended up decreasing the amount of enrollment for some of those existing schools like Wolf Lake. So that, so that's, that's another issue that, that they also keep track of. And like you mentioned, there's, some of those numbers went down in some of the other districts and we've got some that are actually at capacity. But you know, as, as we build, it's definitely something we've got to keep track of and, and, and keep that connection with, with Orange County Public Schools.
Why don't we look at maybe what the first meeting in December, kind of come back with some numbers just for that? I mean, the KPI, okay, or do you want to do both KPI and maybe Southwest? Just kind of give us a number on units?
Yeah, because the Southwest has all the apartments that are going in, so.
Be a different school.
That's a good idea.
So what, if you could come back to us, Jim, with some, some numbers for Southwest and.
Okay.
And then the KPI.
I'll get something sent over to you, so you'll, you'll have those to, to look at also.
Okay.
Well, I think we need to do it for the whole city because what they do is because Apopka is overcrowded, Wakava's undercrowded, so they mesh the two together and say, you don't qualify because of Wakava's underpopulation.
I was just thinking about just the numbers, just, just raw numbers and then we, it was school board bird, let her come back and give us how that all kind of.
Give us, give us an overall picture of Apopka and, and the schools.
Yeah.
And the capacities and where, where they see it's going and where we can show them where we've got the, the additional buildings going.
Yeah, okay. Super, all right. Any other discussion?
No, I just want to make a quick comment though.
Sure.
The, similar to this, I guess the discussion we've been having today, the planning commission, who is an advisory board to us and appointed members, the chair there was somewhat antagonistic towards the applicant and the resident and I feel that kind of happened again today as well. So I would want some type of rules of decorum or something because I don't need an advisory board trying to intimidate our residents or applicants. So I would go back and make sure you look at, watch the planning commission of this and it was, another member had to step in to shut the conversation down or the, the acts of intimidation. So we need to be careful because I'm okay if we give a developer a hard time, I'm all about that all day, but if it's a resident and applicant, that's a different story. So we need to be very mindful of how we're talking to our residents.
Okay. All right. With that, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 3025 at first reading and hold over for second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3,026. Susan?
Ordinance number 3,026. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from CC, Community Commercial to CR, Regional Commercial, for certain real property generally located at 2301 Coral Hills Road, owned by HCH Development LLC, comprising 6.36 acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Good afternoon, this is June's own planner two. The items in rezoning application are located at 2301 Coral Hill Road. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from Community Commercial to Regional Commercial for the operation of a landscape company. The total site area is 6.36 acres and future land use of the property is commercial and the future land use of its surrounding areas are commercial and agriculture. Current zoning of the property is Community Commercial and its surrounding areas are Community Commercial, Regional Commercial and Agriculture. The DRC has recommended approval and planning commission anonymously recommended approval of this change of zoning. The recommended motion is offsetting the first read of ordinance number 3026 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on November 15th, 2023. The staff member and applicant is here to respond to any questions.
All right, this is June's first opportunity to be in front of city council, so y'all go easy on him, okay?
All right, thank you.
Any questions for June?
I had a, it's a, and it's not particular to this, there's, there's a project going on the northeast corner of the expressway in Claricon, it's supposed to be a rock climbing gym, do you know anything about that? Is that still coming or? I know this is, it.
Yes.
Okay, that's, yes, thank you. Because this area should start all starting to get filled in, correct?
Yes, that, that's probably one of the biggest things is this, this area is one of our growth areas now, is pretty much the whole city. But yeah, the climbing place is still coming. They're putting their final designs together for crossing the road, cross, you know, getting the access, doing the parking and the design of the building and interior also. So they, they will be coming, we're hoping that probably within the next four months or so that they'll be able to break ground.
Yeah, I think there's, the sun works for, for Radley on the summer camps.
Oh, yeah, it's right.
With the, yeah, climbing wall, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So no, another good opportunity for groundbreaking.
Excellent, thank you.
Get your shovel arms ready. Okay, any, anybody from, any questions, I'm sorry. Any other questions?
No questions, welcome, doctor, I should say. Another person I'm going to have to call doctor on staff.
He's got two of them, three of them, that's right, three of them. Yes, okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Now we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 3,026 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Blazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2,023-35.
Resolution 2,023-35. A resolution of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, approving extension of the Apopka Community Redevelopment Agency's termination date. Modifying the Apopka Community Redevelopment Plan's termination date, providing for conflict, severability and an effective date.
Jim Hitt, Community Development Director. This is something that we've been kind of waiting for over the last 30 years when, when we originally adopted the CRA, this is back in June of 1993. In September, this is just for the record, September 26th, 1995, Orange County executed the interlocal agreement for the CRA itself, providing for a sunset date of January 1st, 2024. June 21st, 2017, most of you were here, the city did adopt the resolution, adopt approving the update to the CRA plan itself. That CRA plan had probably about 10 times more projects in it than what was originally proposed, just so that it could last the lifetime of the CRA plan and the CRA and also the extension. That does not forbid us from doing another amendment over the next hopefully 10 years. So in this case, the city will be requesting a 10-year extension. I've been hearing some different, different comments from Orange County staff regarding a five-year and then a review and then another five years and the next, latest one was three years and then a seven-year, potential seven-year extension. I really don't know what they're going to propose at this stage, but the request by Orange County, and this is something that I do definitely agree, is that, that we pass this resolution just to express that we want another 10 years to be able to finish off some of the slum and blight that are in the area. We're just getting started. As you all know, back in 2005, when I did leave the city, there was not a lot done in the CRA district. Unfortunately, and fortunately, that did allow us to accumulate enough funds to be able to do the projects that we have as part of this budget. One of the other things that the, that the county did request from us and I put, I, I included this in your packet, was a CRA project timeline. These are for the major projects. Wayfinding signage, we're hoping to get that construction started in November, December. We're looking to get at least eight or nine of these signs up probably by January, February. The downtown trail is the big one. The design is just about all done. We did add one section of one-way road on Station Street going from Sixth Street down to Park Avenue. That was, it was kind of a leftover spot, we didn't even think about it because we're doing one-way from Central Ave down to Sixth Street, which is about halfway down the block. And then we were going to stay with two-way and we thought, just for safety purposes, continue that one-way down to Park Avenue and then Sixth Street in front of Ace Hardware is still going to be a two-way street. So that still leaves a good circulation pattern for that area, but it also provides us the opportunity to add parallel parking onto the road for that whole stunt, portion of Station Street. Other than that portion, the plans are basically ready to go and we're hoping to be able to go out to bid in about a month and a half. Possibly two months and we're looking to, because it's, it's not a simple project because we are dealing with all the property owners that are along there, so it's going to be the, the 10-foot trail. It'll also be aprons for the, for the businesses or residents that are there, it'll also be lighting and, and some landscaping from the tree fund. So, but that's our, that's our biggest project. Again, if we did not have that 10 or 12-year, 12-year gap, we would not have the money to be able to do this, to be able to make some improvements to the, to the downtown. The biggest thing is that it's going to be lit and that's something that we don't have in any of these corridors right now is good lighting. So that'll be able to provide that for that. The next one, the, the other, the next big portion is the, the neighborhood park at Sixth, or at Eighth Street in Highland, we dedicated, or we put in $105,000 towards, in the CRA budget towards that park, that's going to be the neighborhood park, there, that there are no parks in that area right now. That's basically the old maintenance barn area across the street from the, from the city's gas station, filling station for the, I think it's gas and, gas and gas. The other one that, that was called out, and these again, we, we, I talked with Radley on these because three of these projects are Radley's basically. And he, we went over the dates and the timelines. And he, we went over the dates and the timelines. And it's probably going to be, you know, plus or minus a month or so. But the City Hall Park, this is the one right, right out here, going out this way, right towards Aunt Gingy Breds. That one is probably one of the easier ones because UCF did a general design for us already. And so we're hoping to be able to get something in there that people can take a rest, go out there. We're looking to do a drinking fountain and probably a dog fountain. So you can get, walk your dogs up, up around this area, too. Then the other big one is the skate park and pump track, which we put in, we did put in $400,000, which is about the city's share for TIF each year. It obviously goes up every, every time, but that's, but that's, that's going to be a big one. That'll be a good game changer, but it does bring people in our downtown area. And it is right on the trail. So people can go there, do that. They can watch the kids, they can drop off their kids, they can come back down to downtown as we get our downtown going also. And then, and then we, of course, still have our assistance programs. I'm going to be reaching out to residential and to the commercial with, with a mailer, just outlining that we do have funding available for, for facade fix-up, for building code work, and then for residential homes so that we can get some of the homes fixed up, whether it's a paint, you know, painting, fencing, just putting their number on their house. I've noticed that there's not, there's, there's homes that don't have numbers on them still. And that's something that, that can be part of that, that project for the residential fix-up. Electrical boxes and amp boxes, that's on Central Ave and Fifth Street. This is part of the downtown redo. This is so that when we do have downtown block parties, that we can actually close off the road. We can bring in the food trucks or the vendors. And instead of running noisy and polluting generators, they can plug in. And that's, that's a real simple one that I saw something back about 10 years ago down in Sarasota that they, they did this type of a program down there. And it made a whole, a whole big difference in terms of getting vendors to even come downtown. A lot of them don't have generators. They don't want to go out and spend five, or 500 bucks or $1,000 for a generator and then only be able to use it once or twice a week or a month or a year to be able to go out and have their, and do their business. And then the other one that I've already talked to, I was hoping chief, chief was here, was going to be here. But we do have an outline for the CRA Neighborhood Policing Program. We were actually looking at this a few years ago. And we couldn't get the funding for it at that time. But we did put $100,000 in there for, for the first year for the funding for the, for the policing program. And that's to be able to allow for a couple of police Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays to be able to patrol the area, whether it's in a car or bicycle. We're shooting for bicycle just because it's a little bit more neighborly. And they can also see things that, that normal car driving can't see. And then of course, walking also is, is a big one as we get, as we get going in our program. So those are the primary projects that we've got going. And of course, there's quite a few other smaller ones that we'll be working on with this. But again, this resolution is to, what we're going to request is a 10-year extension. And whether or not we have to do any bargains for payback or capping the amount of money coming in to the city from the county or refund based on how much we're getting and how much we're spending out, that's something that we'll probably end up having to work out a little bit more, more than likely at the, at the meeting in, in December with the county. But we will, we've got one more meeting before, before I go to the county. And I'm going to probably bring some information back to you in regards to that.
So when you say you have one more meeting, who are you meeting with?
Well, we've got, we've got one more meeting with city council before I go to the, actually, we got two more meetings with city council before I go to the meeting with Orange County for the, for the county commission.
And, and just because, in case anyone from the public, from the CRA district would be interested, what is the date that the Orange County will be hearing the CRA?
I was going to say that, let me, I want to confirm real quick just to make sure. Believe I said it was going to be, yes, December 12th, which is a Tuesday at 9:00 AM. I'm not sure where we are in the agenda because I don't think, they don't have the agenda yet. But it's December 12th on a Tuesday.
Can someone put that on our calendar?
Yeah.
I'll find out. Yeah, that's, thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah, any support that we can get from, from the businesses, from all of you, of course, that's, that always goes a long way.
Any questions for Jim? Anybody? Anybody? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
You know, just one question because I see that you have these, you know, the outline of where you're going to spend the money and the timeline that you hope to kind of start getting going. Do we have the staff to support this?
The, well, the majority of this is, is, it's, it's all going through bids, bid process. So that's going through the finance department. Now that I have a full staff for community development, I, in fact, as I was talking to the mayor a little bit about this yesterday, I think it was, I, I can spend a little bit more time on getting these things done. And that's probably the biggest thing is getting, it was the time to be able to get them done. Radley's got basically three other major projects with the parks. From there, the, the bid program or the bid process for the trail itself, that one, I'm going to probably take that on as the, as the manager. I will need help with the, the engineering portion. And that's where Richard comes in and Winston. So that'll, that'll help with the, the actual design and, and how it's, how it's put in.
Okay.
I'm confident.
Yeah, that's, that's the concern with Orange County is this looks good on paper, but are we moving forward with it? In other words, delays have been over the years is, as, as you admitted, that for many years, nothing was done.
Correct.
It just kind of sat there stagnated. You know, it's water under the bridge, but we have to show that we are committed to these projects and that we have a timeline, we have the staff, and we are going to move forward with it. That's what we have to show Orange County.
Yep.
Okay.
Agreed.
Mr. Becker, questions? Everybody good? Okay, all right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, we'll close the pub hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution 2023-35.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Blazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2023-36.
Resolution 2023-36. A resolution of the city council of the city of Apopka approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive franchise agreement for commercial solid waste services with JJ's Wisp, JJ's Waste and Recycling LLC, for roll-off container collection and disposal of waste within the city and approving an effective date.
Good afternoon, Richard Earp, Public Services, filling in for Josh today. And we may be able to answer questions if you have them.
That's it.
Yes, ma'am.
He's taken a much-needed vacation, so we wish him safe travels. Any questions for Richard if he can answer them?
I had a couple of questions. I would have CC'd you on the questions I sent to previously, but I didn't realize. I know you, I think you actually were on some of these. Either way, I guess I don't understand the reason to have a franchise agreement when we have multiple other vendors doing this within the city as well. So I know it doesn't preclude other vendors from also doing the service, but I guess what is the point of us entering this agreement?
And maybe, can our city attorney, Cliff, you want to step in on that one?
Well, I just know the history because I read some of the emails. And the history was that this was recommended by the prior city attorney, but I don't have the benefit of knowing why he recommended it. Because I understand the question, if, if it's non-exclusive, there, I can think of advantages that might make me recommend it, like they're willing to pay. And, and there's some cost that needs to be defrayed that that will help us with, with an agreement. It gives us recourse if they do things that are outside of the agreement. But it puts them arguably at a competitive disadvantage against people who don't have to do those things. But if they're willing to do it, I can see, I don't see a disadvantage to us, I guess is the best way to put it. But that, whether that was Mike's reasoning, I don't know.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, I think that it's strange. It just makes me ask a lot, a lot more questions. And the other, and, and we, we have your attorney Shepherd name at the bottom of this resolution, but you didn't write this, correct?
No.
No, this was our previous attorney, okay. So not super comfortable with that either. And then there's also, it doesn't coincide with our actual ordinance. So we have an ordinance that this is derived from that states certain things, like this is saying that's a five-year contract when our ordinance says it can only be a three-year. So this isn't accurate to our...
I do, I do understand that. In my, in discussing with staff, it's my understanding they're intending to, to bring to you a change to the ordinance.
Well, wouldn't we have to change the ordinance first before entering into this?
Not necessarily, because you're also the party who would find whether there was a violation of the ordinance.
But there was, there would be. I mean, that's, yes, we're not going to tattle on ourselves at the same time. Let's do it right, let's do it properly. So that, that's, I, again, I just, there doesn't seem, I don't understand why we're doing this. And I don't think anybody kind of has that. There, nobody's given me a good reason why we're doing this. It seems like a waste of paperwork at this point. Non-exclusive, it's inaccurate, so it needs to be rewritten. I, I don't, I'd, I'd be interested to hear what we, what the rest of the commission says.
Anybody else got? Chuck, you got any, any extra? I mean, it's, it's...
I don't have any history dealing with the franchising agreements. I was talking with Cliff today about it, that we need some clearing up in the ordinance and so forth. But when I talked to Josh, he referred me back to the fact that Michael had given them direction, and that's where it came from.
So, yeah, I mean, absent anybody that can stand tall on this one, I would say, do we just punt until Josh is back?
Josh is back, yes.
We'll do that, we can do that, absolutely.
Yeah, because I mean, I, I had some emails with him, though, and that, he didn't, it was the same answers. That this was recommended.
I mean, this is, this is standard operating. I know the county does it.
Sure, I, I don't have a problem. If you guys wanted to table it, let me reach out to Michael and see if he can tell me why. I just don't know.
Well, I mean, it's, but we have other franchise agreements with other...
I'm sure we do.
Are they exclusive agreements that we have?
Don't know.
So that, yeah, no, this, I don't, and I don't want to use our previous attorney's agreement. This needs to be rewritten if we're going to do this. Not just edited, but I, I need you to, because when I asked you, did you write it? Your tone was like, absolutely not, I did not write this.
Well, the resolution, the reason you know I didn't write it is I spell my, I would have spelled my name right.
Well, okay, well, that's, again, my point, I see that now. And there's other issues as well. So, yeah, again, we can table this, but it needs to be completely rewritten.
So I'm moving table this.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Smith to table this until next meeting. Got a second by Commissioner Nesta.
Would Josh be back by then?
Yes.
Okay.
Got a motion by Smith, second by Nesta. All those in favor? Wait, anybody from public? I'm sorry, anybody from public? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right. Next up, city council reports. Commissioner Blazquez.
Oh, okay. Here I am. I wrote some things. Oh. Okay. First, this is from the last council meeting that I had, I actually said that we did not have a proclamation for the, of Hispanic community. You did forward it to me. I did see that it was presented to the Apopka Chamber Hispanic Leadership Group. Like today, we had a proclamation and we've had many proclamations. And maybe next year it would be nice if we can read the proclamation publicly to our Hispanic community. So just want to make a correction. We did get a proclamation, but it was not read here in City Hall. Of course, today is November 1st. And it's, it's a, it's a celebration that's very big in the Hispanic community, especially in the Mexican community. Dia de los Muertos, which is Day of the Dead. And it's where they remember their friends and family who have passed away. And then tomorrow is All Souls Day. Our resident, Mr. Rod Olson, had mentioned the Brotherhood Riders. And we were all there, the mayor and, and all the commissioners. And as he said, I know.
I was there in spirit.
Yeah, you were there in spirit because he was still on vacation. Again, I thought it was, it was such an honorable recognition of our fallen firefighter, Austin Duran. And they were still continuing to go along. I think they were going up to Cocoa Beach, I remember. And there were about 38 to 40 bicyclists coming through our city. And it was just an honor for us to all be there and greet them. So thank you to the Brotherhood bikers on that. And Mr. Rod Olson, I think I'm going to have you read all the highlights of our city. Of course, congratulations to the two officers who delivered a healthy baby boy on October 31st. And the first words were read by Officer Brooks, "Welcome to the world." So I thought that was very nice. Reminder for all our city and all the residents that are paying attention, this Sunday, we fall back one hour. So remember to change your clocks. So this way you don't get late, you don't arrive late to your appointments. And then the following Saturday, which is Veterans Day, the annual, Apopka's annual memorial over at the Edgewood Greenwood Cemetery is something that my husband and I always attend.
Kitland Nelson.
Oh, I'm sorry, what did I say?
You said cemetery.
We're doing it at the Kitland?
Kitland Nelson, yeah.
We're not doing it at the cemetery?
That's what they've, yes.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay, so thank you for the correction. Ed and I would have been the only ones in the cemetery. All right, so I corrected.
I double-checked, yes.
Oh, okay. We would have been the only ones at the cemetery, wondering where everybody else was. Oh, and then, of course, following that, which, something that, again, Mr. Rod Olson and, and myself, we faithfully go to our Saturday sounds. And so that will be Saturday sounds on that day from 5:00 to 7:00. And do we have another council meeting before this? But just to kind of highlight, I saw the Apopka Recycle Day that's going to be also at Kitland Nelson Park from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon. So I would just advise our residents to go on the website so you know what you can bring to dispose of. And then also Wednesday, November 15th, is teaching day. And that's something that I've participated in for many years. And I guess, I don't know if each of us have been invited to teach, teach in. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that. And what else did I want to mention? Oh, Pastor Todd, who was here, I just kind of want to give him, you know, some kind of recognition. Every week I get a text from City Serve. And every Monday through City Serve and City of Destiny, they have a food distribution. So just want to say thank you to City of Destiny. It started when COVID was in place and it still continues. And they continuously provide so many different services. And the most important thing is the food distribution. And at one point, I remember going to the food distribution to help some of the families that didn't have transportation. And I can tell you that the boxes are filled with fresh vegetables, dairy, and all kinds of healthy foods. So I just wanted to recognize Pastor Todd because that's something that they continuously have done even post-COVID. So that's it for me. Thank you.
You bet. Mr. Becker?
Yeah, first thing, so I've noticed it too, and I saw somebody else post about it today. Rob, I don't know, do we still own the rights to apopka.net? Because if you go to it, it has this weird kind of error when you go to it. Can we have it self-resolved so it automatically punch you to apopka.gov? So hopefully that's low-hanging fruit. And then the, the second point is, I, I've gone out and took some pictures of it, too. But we're getting a lot of emails on this particular topic. Do I just hit play here? Rob? I hit play. What, is it at the end of this?
One moment to get that one out of there.
Which one are you talking about?
So we're getting a lot of emails going back and forth regarding the Winn-Dixie property. So I went out there and took some pictures because I just want to, I'm a visual person and I just want to make sure that we're all aligned in this conversation. So the, the back history here is, and I just want to be able to point this stuff as I'm talking through it. Back history here is this Winn-Dixie opened, I don't know, less than a month ago or about a month ago or so. The city had some reservations around it being fully ready to go, to issue a full CO. The staff made a decision to issue a temporary CO so that the store could open. As part of their... As part of their design or construction plans, if you see that road, that, that road that leads to the west of the property over to Highland, I believe. So the road is, when it was as-built, it's about a foot north of what it should have been as an as-built. Initially, the, the plans had called for lights that you see there in the picture that are roughly 25-foot tall to be on the north side of the property. When they went to go construct that and install those lights, there was two things at play. Further down, as you approach Highland, there's power lines and a stop sign that would kind of interfere with, with light placement, as well as that retaining wall that's there on the property. Where these being 25-foot tall, they'd have to go down about seven feet in terms of a footer, which would impact the, I guess, the cone of influence, I guess, from a, from a construction term. So it would present structural stability issues on that wall that was going out to the west. So the applicant, or the, the property owner installed the lights on the south side of the property so that you'd have proper lighting to the number that was specified in the original plans. At some point, Taurus had come through and removed the lights, you know, unbeknownst to the property owners that installed the lights. And so they've been sat over on the side of the building since that time. And as you can see, there's a series of temporary lights there on the street that obviously are not a long-term solution to this problem. From my understanding, the applicant has obviously the desire to keep the lights where they were originally placed, even though they were against design. And right now, city staff has the change order from them to be able to do that, with the benefit statement that those lights obviously have the proper outcome and do what they're supposed to do, as well as the added benefit that they also ran electric onto that property so that way when Ale House does get constructed, they have proper, the power to run to lights elsewhere on that property. So a value statement. As a backup plan, they also indicated that to go on the north side, they would have to reduce that light down to a 15-foot product, which they said would be sufficient. You don't have to go as deep near that retaining wall to do that. It does not interfere with any truck traffic or any kind of interference with the road traffic condition. And it would do the same job, it would just be a 15-foot product. However, it sounds like staff does not agree with the light, the light type. So I guess, long story short is, this is the only thing that's preventing this applicant from having a full CO. And I'm, I'm, I'm perplexed as to why this can't get to the finish line. Because this seems like it would just be a basic change order. And I, and I want, I want to be very clear, and I, and I have an assumption about what you might say about between two private parties, et cetera. However, the minute that we issued a temporary CO, I feel the city dipped our toes in this water.
I, I, I won't comment on that in the public arena, I'm happy to talk to you about it offline, but as to the initial problem, what got left, at least I think, and I may end up admitting listening, I'm certainly not trying to imply anything else. But what I didn't hear in your recitation of the background is that where they put the lights was on somebody else's property. That's the problem. It's not that they put them on a place and then this other property owner took them down willy-nilly, it was on their property, it had no right to be there. The property owner, or the applicant who put them there, did not put as a part of his plan that they were going to put it on somebody else's property without having first obtained the permission to do so. And instead, they did it without the permission, and now they can't get the permission. So that is why it's a dispute between two private property owners. What you should know, that I can say, is that I've had a discussion with Mr. Govan, I think is his name, and he has told me, in a fairly lengthy conversation in which I explained to him, I cannot really talk back to you because you're represented by council, but I can listen. And he told me that they have every intention of trying to work it out with the applicant. But I didn't get into what terms he was planning or whatever. He is very well aware of the Thanksgiving holiday being a big deal for grocery store and all grocery stores and all of that. And I have no idea of the status of those negotiations. But what I am clear on is that the TCO issue, I'll talk to you offline about it, but as it sits right now, the more we dip our toes in the water of solving this private dispute, the deeper we're going to get. So if, if you think we waited in before, we're about to dive into the deep end if we're not careful.
Yeah, and, but again, we, we issued a TCO on this property and now to get to a full CO, and it sounds like there's a deadline looming, the, the, the property owner is trying to get to the point, I just want a lighted street. Now, I don't understand why staff is balking at the solution for the 15-foot product on the north side.
I don't know about that.
The original design. Again, this goes back to the, unless there's something on Land Development Code that precludes that product from being there, again, it's, you're just trying to have a lighted street.
I can answer this easily. First off, the, the, yeah, Jim Hitt, Community Development Director. The original location was supposed to be, like you've shown, that's, that's a good picture, by the way, was supposed to be along there. They did place the, the lights on the southern side of that portion without any knowledge or conveyance of what they were going to be doing, when they were going to be doing it, where they were going to do it. So that was number one, that was the biggest fault of theirs right there. Number two, yes, they did submit plans for the 15-foot poles. Staff thinks that's, would actually do very good. Problem is, Mr. Govan does not want them entering or doing anything, anything else on the property. And, and Taurus is the one that owns that property. So we cannot issue a permit for some plans that could meet the code and probably, and do, actually, without the permission of the property owner to be able to do it. So that's where it does go into civil things.
So every, every, every construction improvement on properties owned by Taurus that were constructed by this applicant, or this property owner that owns Wynn Dixie, went through a formal approval process on staff level, and it was approved by Taurus. I'm going to be very specific about that question, and I want a very specific answer.
Taurus did have an agreement with the TCII, the developers, to be able to do that road and to be able to put those lights in.
But every, every, everything that happened, like the retaining wall that faces 441, constructed by the people that constructed Wynn Dixie, you have a formal approval of those plans of that construction design from Taurus?
Yes, they, they basically wrote off, they, they've got the agreement that was signed off by them in order to be able to develop.
I want copies of all that.
Okay.
Okay. Every, every, every single thing that was done on Taurus-owned property by this developer, I would like to see formal approvals of that design by Taurus.
Okay.
Okay.
And while we're on this topic, too, I guess, what's the expiration of the TCO?
I don't read.
It's this month, isn't it?
I, I want to say it's a month, but I, I don't have the exact date.
So what happens?
I wasn't ready for the, you know.
Sorry, yeah, no, no, yeah, no. So what happens when we get to that date? Are we shutting down Wynn Dixie?
I couldn't tell you on that one either. We're, we're hoping that Wynn Dixie comes in and that they, they get this thing worked out between them.
But they're, but they're trying to, from the sounds of it. They gave a viable option on the north side.
Yeah.
That, you're saying that city won't treat it as a change order for it to happen because it's Taurus property. They can't reinstall it on the south side because it's Taurus property. They put a fence around the property, did you all get a permit?
Yes.
Get a permit for that?
Yes.
Okay. So there, there's no pathway to resolution. And so if this gets to a point where we're getting to the deadline of the TCO, holy cow. That is.
Because it falls back on us as, as a city then, and then I think that's what, it just, it, this is.
Yeah, we, we.
We're not in a great position.
We got kind of roped into this because they announced a grand opening without.
No, 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 I, I disagree with that. We had every right to say no if you all had reservations about this being an issue. We should have never, I'm not going to say we, you should have never issued a TCO had there been these looming issues.
There, there's not a right of way?
I'm sorry?
There's not a right of way to this property?
No, it's actually two pieces of property, side by side, going from, from Main Street to the north, there's two pieces of property, that's not, not an actual roadway.
So the only thing I'm, I'm concerned about, because I did know about this ongoing issue between two property owners involving Taurus, is, and I've, I've mentioned this to you, we're trying to encourage other businesses to come into this area, and we supposedly have Ale Miller's House. I don't want this problem to start chasing people, chasing retailers away. And I, I certainly don't want Ale Miller's House to say, wait a minute, I don't want to get involved in this, that the city's not doing what it needs to do. And I understand that, we're not, but we're in the middle of it. Like you said, we issued a temporary CO. At some point, we are looking to have it as a permanent CO. But at this, you know, I'm, I'm hoping Ale's Miller's House is not watching this and saying, hmm, I don't know if I want to do business with the City of Apopka.
Well, one of the reasons that Mr. Govan did take, take down the poles that were put in the wrong place in the first place was that Miller Ale House was having issues by having those poles on the property that they were going to be developing.
Okay.
And they knew that that was going to be causing an, an issue, because along where they were going to be putting that was going to be parking Landscape Island and their own internal lights. So there was a conflict in the plans.
But again, I, I don't.
If, if Mr. Govan.
I don't want to be a dead horse here, but we're talking, these lights are easily moved from my understanding. They're, and it sounds like the applicant, or I keep on calling them applicant.
That's okay.
The developers of that property that's not Taurus has, through the exchanges I've seen, feel like they're going to operate in good faith. That way, if Ale House comes in and says, hey, that light is only facing the street, we want to put a dual head on that thing to illuminate our parking lot, hey, value add, you already paid for electric to come on property, you already have that pole there. If it interferes with ingress egress design, you just lift the light out and relocate it. But right now, there's no path to getting a full CO on this property.
The, the path to me would be if Mr. Govan allowed them to do the lights the way they're, they've been submitted for us for review. To me, that's the simplest solution.
Yeah, I, I guess we're getting to a place where this goes back to my, my curiosity as, have they explicitly approved every single construction plan on their piece of property as it relates to what the developer of Wynn Dixie did? And I, my, my hunch is that they did not explicitly design or approve every single design element.
I doubt they designed.
By that, by that standard, you set precedent.
It was probably a, and I've got to look at it, so I'm, I'm guessing here, they probably didn't do exactly every single thing. They probably saw a set of plans and said, yes, you can, this is, this is approved. I'll see what I can find, though, for.
Well, I want to make one point, too, here, is that this isn't, I think this is outside of the council's purview, and this is not something we should be discussing in, in any capacity anyways. But the reason it came up is that the mayor did reach out to the tenant, and that's what then the developer called us, and that's how we all got brought in. You and I have discussed this many times, this is not a council issue, it should not be brought up in front of us at all, but now it is. So it, it, it's a messy situation, but I don't want to see the Wynn Dixie shut down. So we need to figure this out.
Neither do we.
Yeah, so it needs to be figured out, so.
Try and get some answers.
The, I'll save the medium for the, so as it relates to the other thing, so the RFP for, do we see an R?
Done with me.
Okay. That RFP, was that for the headhunter? Is, what's in scope for that? Is it for the city administrator only, or is it for economic development as well?
It would allow for any administrator, so it would allow for the economic development director.
Okay. And then I saw that the Economic Development Director position was posted on the Florida Economic Development Council, it was posted on Saturday, the 28th. We're, we're continuing to try to see if we can get something through that also. But if we don't get anything, that's why we opened that bid to allow for us to use that service that way also.
We, we've had maybe five come in, none of them I thought were worthy of, and I'm happy to share them with you, if you want to take a look at them, I'm happy to share those, I mean, Chuck, you can send it to them, the ones that we've gotten in since Saturday, but I don't think the quality that we, we, you know, we deserve, so. But, but if you, Chuck, if you'd send that to them?
I'll give it to the fire director. And then the last bit, obviously, we got a note from you, Mr. Vabrik, around the impasse in terms of the fire negotiations. It sounds like there's two paths available. One is to go through arbitration.
I, I've asked Mr. Mandell to come and give y'all a shade meeting to explain where we're at and what direction. I've given him two dates, I don't know which council, I mean, he has some conflicts, but he's trying to work it out. So it'll either be the next one, or December is where I'm shooting.
Sooner the better, because again, the, the two channels from, or two avenues that we could take, from my understanding, is you either go the route of arbitration, or, you know, go see what happens there, or just comes straight here to council. And we, we negotiate and, of this body, I mean, that's appropriate course of action if, if it comes.
I'm not an attorney, so I'm not going to answer on that, I would defer that to Mr. Mandell, that's why I've asked him to come in and talk to you.
And, and I know we're going to, I know, Cliff, you're going to talk about a shade meeting as well. Why don't we, we can also, while we're doing a shade meeting, we want to throw in the, the Taurus slash TCII?
We can't, because it's not pending litigation.
It's not pending yet.
We can do one-on-ones, and that's the best we can do.
Okay, okay.
Well, we don't have to do a shade meeting on a council night or day, correct?
But you're saying is we can't do it?
No, I'm talking about, I'm not talking about that.
You're talking about the labor.
To fire union negotiations.
I can have him come another day, if I can get all five of y'all to agree to a date. I've got to work with his calendar.
Yeah, let's, let's navigate that somehow, I don't think we need to wait for another council meeting. So let's send an email.
Because if we're at impasse, we're at impasse, and so the sooner rather than later.
I'll, I'll reach out to him and see what his dates available are.
So 5:30, 6 o'clock? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then, yeah, I think that's it.
Mr. Smith?
Today is the first day of African-American Indian Heritage Month, and so we want to make sure that that is noted as well. Next, Pastor Todd did come and ask for us to reissue the contract in reference to the warehouse. And I'm not sure if that's going to be in the attorney's report today, that we can get that taken care of as, as soon as possible, that is a, a very valuable asset to our community.
You're talking about City Serve?
Yes, City Serve.
Okay, okay, not, not the building itself.
Well, the building itself is predicated on the.
No, I'm saying, you say a city asset, the, the building is, needs work, what you're talking about, having them here, okay.
Yeah, the, the, having.
Them here.
The ability to, to provide that service to our community is an asset. Also, they, they received a couple of emails in reference to the pedestrian crosswalk that goes, I'm not sure who's responsible, the county or city?
County.
County to maintain it, okay, all right, so then we, I need to reach out to them.
But I, I understand there's an, an agreement between the city and, and the county as far as kind of moving, the, our police department would be the ones who would be called if there's any problems on that, on that, on the bridge itself.
Well, I wasn't talking about problems, I was talking about cleaning it.
Well, you know, when I spoke to Commissioner.
That's county? County cleans it?
Right, they, they're the ones. When I spoke to Commissioner Moore, she, she said that she would be working with, I believe she said Chief McKinley, but she said that the, the issue that she has or the challenges, she can get the department to come clean it up, but as soon as they clean it up, it becomes a problem within a day or two. So she, she feels that the problem is, how can we keep the unhoused, as they call now, or the homeless, from setting up camps on the bridge? And so that's something that she is asking us as the, the body here in, in the city, how can we work to try and, and address that issue? Because she can keep sending a crew to clean it, but as soon as she cleans it, they come back and set up camp. And so at that point, that's an issue that she would, she needs some guidance.
All right. So I, I, I have that conversation with them later. Also, Mr. Olson mentioned earlier about stopping development, and I think several months ago, I asked if it was possible for us to put a moratorium on, on development, and I think about the same time Orange County attempted to do that and was said. And I think about the same time Orange County attempted to do that and was said that it was illegal and couldn't be done. And so I assume that that's why we did not pursue that any further. Because when I first read the law, it just said simply that we had to have a time certain as to when it was started, when it was stopped, and that it had to be declared as, that it's an emergency. So maybe that's something we can look at again. And then.
Commissioner Smith, I'm not going to interrupt you, but I think, and I'm under the same understanding. And I think too, those moratoriums have to really be coupled with the idea of pending policy changes or, you know, land development code changes that would be put into place. And so a moratorium while you're working those things out. So without any sort of specificity related to that, just a blanket moratorium would be kind of.
Right, you need to have a, but moratoriums to be valid. There's actually not a magic time limit, and believe it or not, moratoriums that have lasted for years have been upheld. But they had to be based on a specific reason with a specific set of circumstances that gave rise to it. For example, at one time, I think in my first tenure here, we were talking about a moratorium on Dollar General type stores. And we thought, well, we can't really call out Dollar General, but perhaps we can call out a size of a box store or something like that. So, and it has to be so we can revise the land use code or the comp plan or something. And we have to actually, she's showing that we're taking the efforts to do that during the moratorium period. Particularly in light of the way that the Burt Harris Act has been rewritten recently to really socket to cities. We need to make sure that we cost every T and dot, every I if we're going to do a moratorium. And then if you say, okay, we're going to do it, then you better do all the work that it says in the moratorium you're going to do.
So aren't we updating our comp plan right now? Isn't that in the middle of, aren't we doing that right now?
Yes.
So that new bill, does it affect any of what we have, what we're upgrading in our comp plan?
Yeah, the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council we contracted with, and they are basically right in link with what state guidelines are. So, yeah, anything having to do with that. But like.
When will that come before us? And when did that start? Because it started before I came, returned into office.
There was some.
So it's been now over three years. Am I correct in saying that?
No, it hasn't been three years. We're into it a little over a year right now. But our contract is with East Central Florida Regional, and they have, they've had staff issues, just like they lost a couple of staff, key staff people that were working on the project. So they've recently hired another person that has been assigned to us also. And, but I'm hoping to get something probably in January where we can do a workshop just to show you what we've got. And we've already talked to.
So when you say that they've had a staffing problem, so it's kind of been stagnated? I mean, it just stopped?
No, we've been, we've been meeting with them, doing team meetings or Zoom meetings about every other week or so on those. We've got, we've got basically nine elements, and there's data and analysis gathering, new mapping. We're getting all new maps for the project itself. And then we've got our goals, objectives, and policies that we're also rewriting. And we're making sure that we don't leave stuff out, or that we're have to, we're also having to put some things in that we have not had before. We're also putting in an economic development element, so, which we haven't had before.
So your target date to bring it before us in a workshop is?
Probably in January.
In January?
Yep. One of the, one of the main concerns that we had was making sure people were available. I know that you all are probably going to stay here all the way through the holidays and not go anywhere. But we also want to make sure we have enough, enough time for the general public to also have a chance to look at the, look at the plans.
So would you be able to share with the council? Is any of that available?
Not yet.
No, none of it?
There's still all, the numbers are all skewed all over the place. You know, we've taken what was there, we've rewritten different portions, we've added other goals, objectives, and policies in. We've got new data and analysis. One of the biggest things that we had to wait for was Schimberg, which is one of the major population estimators. They were supposed to have gotten all the new population estimates to us in April and May. We didn't get it until August. So that, and that affects pretty much every single element, because you cannot write things based on population if you don't have the right population estimates in the first place. So that was a huge delay there.
So who's working on that?
East Central Florida Regional Planning Council and all of our staff.
All your staff?
All the staff.
Get to contribute to that.
Yep, Parks and Recreation, Police, Fire, all the departments are contributing into this for level of service. You know, how many police officers are needed? How many firemen are needed? The number of acres that are needed per, per diem, for the different, not per diem, for the, for the different population that we've got. We want to make sure that we have, have the right number of parks, the right size of parks, the locations of the parks. So, but yeah, all the departments are in there. City clerk, you know, going through all the different agreements that were listed originally, and then even new agreements are being put in. So, yeah, all the departments are being involved with this one.
And all this will be ready for January for the workshop?
We'll have a rough draft to be able to show you, so that at least, right now, if I gave it to you, it'd be kind of all over the place. You know, you go from policy number 14-2 to 13-1 to back up to 20-3 or something. You know, it's just, we want to make sure that the numbers are corrected.
Okay.
So it's easier to follow, that's all.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, my last item is Mr. Sam Davis for the Lake Apopka Natural Gas is retiring in February.
Oh, he is.
So we've received five applications for that position. Interviewed two on yesterday, and we'll be interviewing three on tomorrow for his replacement, his retirement in February.
All right, Commissioner Nester?
Attorney Shepherd, are you able to provide an update on that ordinance or the resolution for the disposition of real estate?
I don't know if you mean what kind of update.
Weren't we supposed to be bringing, because we like discussed it, you did a presentation.
Right.
So I thought that was coming back. I don't know if that, it may not be a you question more as a staff question.
Yeah, that, I don't know. What we provided to you was, I think, like a policy and what it would look like and all that stuff. I can't remember beyond that. But as I, I think I had to say this to Jessica earlier. Once we write it, it's kind of a shoot-and-forgot missile, because it then becomes a scheduling issue on who does the agendas. I don't even know whether that's the mayor, the staff, or some combination thereof.
Okay, so Mr. Vavreck, what does that look like for us to?
I'll be more than happy to bring it forward. I think there was some concerns and some of the language going back and forth, if I remember right.
Yeah, there's a substantial amount, but that was our opportunity during that, when you brought it back, to kind of hash through it. I thought that was my understanding.
I think, yeah, if memory serves, I think there was some placeholder blanks of where like certain amounts.
Yeah, we had discussed, I had suggested, here are some amounts you might want to fill in, but those are not, those are for you.
Yeah, I think that was, the next stage was kind of remove the underlines, make those like firm amounts, and then bring it back to an official read, and then if we have any more finer tweaks.
edits, tweaks, yeah. And that's, I have the notes from the numbers that I suggested, and I'll throw them in there. Y'all may not like them, but that's okay.
Right, but that's what we could discuss.
That's the point of like, yeah, and so I want to bring that back up, because I don't want to, the Lust Road property, I don't, we don't need to be disposing of any property until we have a policy in place.
Absolutely. If, here's how I would have thought it would go, is that I provided, y'all say go forward, it gets shown up on agenda, and then it's sent back to me to, okay, fill in the blanks or whatever. And that's what I would expect, but I'll do it any way you want.
No, and I think to your point, it's a staff level, so Mr. Vavreck, can we get that on the next meeting? So that we can have open dialogue, do some edits.
Do you have some numbers that were, he provided? Do you want to stick with those numbers, or do you want to change it?
The numbers aren't as sticking points to me. There's a lot of other.
At a first reading, y'all can.
Exactly, yeah.
So, and I have the numbers, I wrote them down.
And I had sent, and I think it was also sent to everybody else, all of my questions on that, for you guys to review, get some ideas as well, and have some opinions to go in that, into that meeting, so that I would like to have.
I'll work with the city clerk to get it on next agenda.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then do we have an update, and this may be a Mr. Hit, on the CRA real estate that we did? Is it RFP, or what does that look like, or is there a timeline for that? The two parcels?
Yeah, actually, I think it was three, three different parcels total. I've got a meeting with the original submitters for the Station Street, actually, I believe it's this week, Friday, to talk about that. But at the same time, I'm going to be letting them know that they are going to need to resubmit. And it'll be a little bit more refined resubmit at this stage. But I've got to get that, the date ironed out and get that publicized, and it's good for, it's basically for 30 days.
Right, so none of those have been officially posted yet?
No, I haven't had a chance to talk. I was out last week at the FRA conference, so I haven't had a chance to talk.
No, yeah, and not a rush, I just wanted, because it's a new far process, so I got.
Exactly.
So I'm just trying to understand what that looks like.
Yep.
There's the 526 South Forest property that I would like added to that list to be able to RFP.
Which one's 526?
The one that's right here.
The building right here?
Yes.
The, I think it used to call it the Cobb Building.
Yes.
Okay, is that, is that one that, I mean, we can add it to the bill?
Yeah, I mean, it needs love, so yeah, please. We need to allow somebody to be able to do something really cool with it, so.
What's that, 526?
South Forest?
The Cobb Building, right over here. The old Cobb Building.
Said, yeah.
That's the one by the fire station.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
That's going to be added.
Yeah, so I'll need to bring that back to you all to get the same approval to go out to bid for it, or to dispose of it.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you. No, that's awesome. And then, nothing else for you, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
That's okay.
No, so my last comment, and this is, I guess, it's a discussion with council, is that I see that you guys are CCing a lot of my emails, that I'll ask questions to staff, and then you guys are CCing on my emails and getting answers for that. And I know I ask great questions. I just don't see any of your guys' questions at all, so I don't know if you guys aren't asking any questions, or if it's staff.
Can I, can I get in here before we start making a mistake? There shouldn't be any back and forth.
I agree.
The fact that they see answers to you is fine, but if they start responding back, or now we got an issue.
No, we don't respond back. He's asking, is he the only one?
Who asks questions? I just want to make sure that we're real clear here about how we answer this.
Well, I want to make sure that staff isn't acting as like a conduit either for violating the sunshine law, so.
Yeah, well, this is an interesting thing, because one of the questions that came up for me, and I'm weighing in on it, because it affected me at the same way, was whether I was to send my material through who the person requested the answer, and the city administrator, or to all of you at the same time, and y'all said, send it to all of us at the same time. So I do that. And maybe this is some feedback from that. But what I want to make clear, just, whatever you can find out is information that helps you make decisions, that's all good. But it cannot result in communication between you. So for example, your questions get seen and the answers get seen. And if that then engenders a question from somebody else, that's a problem.
Well, I think, and I think that's the thing, I don't, I don't understand, I guess, I haven't seen any of your guys' questions. Not that I want dialogue, there's not, that's not the point. It's why are my questions being forwarded out? I don't know if that's a staff or policy thing, or.
So my, my general interaction is, you know, I get a lot, and staff can attest to this. A lot of people that email me around, you know, potholes or sidewalks or stuff like that. So, you know, forward it onto staff and exchange there, which, again, to public services credit, a lot of those have been done, taken care of very quick lately, and I appreciate that. I kind of table a lot of my questions from my pre-council meetings, so I don't know that I ask a whole bunch of questions that require a whole bunch of detailed research and stuff to come back to me. I discuss a lot of that in open dialogue during those meetings. I'm trying to think of.
A majority of the questions from the other commissioners are brought up during their staff meetings.
Right.
You are probably one of the most unique ones that I have that send questions, but the rest generally address them during their meetings.
Now, had this been six or seven years ago, I may have been doing the same thing a whole bunch. I don't know, maybe over time, it's just to that level.
I just think it's more effective for me to do it that way, but I guess I will stop doing it in that capacity, and I'll wait to do it in person then.
Right.
I don't mind taking your questions that way. I'm just letting you know, you ask, dealing with them, and they generally bring those questions up during our staff reviews.
Yeah, and I think the genesis of all of this was more around, I think it's more around attorney conversations more so than anything. I think that's what started this kind of exercise of whatever Commissioner Nester was asking of staff, and that got copied to everybody on the council, versus, I think, what started it was there was opinions being written by our attorney, sent back to staff level, that the rest of the council weren't being copied on.
Sure.
I think that's the priority for me, is that if there's any legal interpretations or opinions, that's what I want to be copied on. I don't necessarily need to see all of the back and forth between other commissioners and staff.
I think the way I kind of look at it, my rule of thumb is if it's, if it's a pothole or a tree hanging over the road, that one you email. If it's a policy decision, that would be something for personal discussion. Just my, the way I do things is, you know, you put in an email, it's for an immediate problem that staff can fix. If it's a policy issue, I think you're a lot safer putting it, putting it into the meeting that you're meeting with staff.
Well, my thought was, is that the whole reason I do it is so that staff doesn't have to stop their time to go research this. It's in their inbox, they can get to it when they need to. It's efficiency sake, it's what I would do in my business and what I do in my business, but.
A lot of your questions are more intensive, more directed at certain information, and I'm more than happy to take those questions and forward them to staff that way, like we do. But most of the other questions come up are minor in general, and we can answer them directly. But I do know you'd like to get in depth in some things, and I'm more than happy to take those questions and address them that way.
Okay, I'll adjust, thank you.
But, I mean, it's a good thing, I've found value in what you've asked and some of the responses that we get from staff. And, you know, there are certain questions that you ask that I may not have thought of myself, so it's not, it's not throwaway work, or I'm not devaluing what you're doing, it's just, I don't, you know, we don't just operate the same way.
Right, I hear you. I just don't see any of your guys' questions or responses, so.
You said.
But I sent one to, to the city administrator about a definition of a term that I heard at one of the meetings, and he forwarded it to council, and he sent it back to all of us.
Well, the council's been very consistent on that for all of us, but at the staff level, it has not been. So it's okay. It'll, I'll make sure it's figured out. Thank you.
Next up, Cliff?
Sir, okay, because I need to read, I'm going to put my glasses on, and I'm going to make sure that I get this exactly right. I'm going to request a litigation shade meeting, which is different than the kind that you had for Labor. That's a pure exception to the shade meeting or the sunshine law, whereas this is, got a lot of requirements, and this is why I'm going to read it specifically. This is regarding the Southwind Commons versus Apopka case. If you're not familiar, that is the case involving the affordable housing issue that came up under Mr. Rodriguez's tenure. I don't remember all the details, except that it was involved the development and some language in the DA, and that's as much as I know about it, because it was assigned to an insurance defense lawyer. And that lawyer, Mr. Noah, has asked for a shade meeting, and I'm going to read it exactly, because the statute's very exacting this way. We are writing to formally request that we convene a private shade meeting with the city council pursuant to Florida statute, section 286.0118A, so that we and your city attorney, me, can obtain the council's advice on this pending litigation. As you know, attendance at this meeting will be limited to city council members, the city administrator, city attorney Cliff Shepherd, and outside litigation attorneys Douglas T. Noah Esquire, Patricia Rego Chapman Esquire, and Parker J. Watts Esquire. The subject of the meeting will be confined to settlement negotiations and strategy sessions related to litigation expenditures per Florida statute 286.0118B. Now, in terms of timing for that meeting, the requested time, and it's me making this request, is 5:30 PM prior to our next scheduled council meeting on 11/15 to 23. If that doesn't work for you, you can certainly have a different time. I just thought this would be convenient relative to your meeting's schedule, and is a time I know I've already cleared with the attorneys who are actually requesting this shade meeting. So if that works for you, then we can put it on the agenda, and I will make sure that a meeting invite goes out to the lawyers, so they know that it's all been scheduled. I can answer some questions about procedurally, but in case you haven't been through a litigation shade meeting recently, we would convene here before the meeting to announce that the meeting was going to be convened. We would go through essentially an announcement, just like I just made, as to who would be in attendance. But it would also include a court reporter, which we don't yet have scheduled. The meeting would then be adjourned to wherever it is we go, the mayor's conference room, wherever we go to have it. The court reporter would go with us. Everything would be on the record in that room, but that record would not be able to be released to the public as a public record until after the litigation was complete. And then we would come back in this room. If there were any decisions to be made or actions to be taken, you do not vote or even poll anybody in that room. You just ask and answer questions related to those things that are within the narrow exception, settlement negotiations and strategy sessions related to litigation expenditures. I believe this meeting would be mostly about settlement discussions, because I think there is a proposal that the lawyers would like to discuss with you guys. So that's my understanding of the purpose of. So that's my understanding of the purpose of that particular meeting. If there's no action to be taken, then there's no action to be taken. If there is, we authorize you to pursue this settlement, then that would be done here in the public forum prior to the seven o'clock regular meeting. So that's the, the way the procedure works.
So that meeting would take place at what time on the fifteenth?
Five thirty.
If you agree, it would be five thirty on the fifteenth.
Everybody okay with five thirty? Okay.
I mean, what if it, the only thing I don't want to do is to inconvenience our public because the last shade meeting, we, we made our public sit here and wait for almost like an hour.
Which, which is.
So I don't want to do that.
Which is why I wanted to start, I know, I took that into consideration, and instead of allotting only an hour, I allotted an hour and a half, and I did before instead of not during or after.
Okay, because I.
Because your regular meeting is seven, so by starting at five thirty, you have an hour and a half to do your shade stuff before you come back here and start the regular agenda.
Okay, so for me, before the shade meeting, can you just explain what a shade meeting legislative?
Yes, no, no, well, no, it's more informational. But even as to information, it's limited to certain topics. For example, without naming the city, cities have been found in violation of sunshine during a shade meeting in which the topics of discussion strayed from those narrow areas I discussed, which are settlement discussions and litigation expenditures related to strategy or something like that. It's a very narrow exception. So for example, if you said, well, would it be a solution to this if we amended the comp plan? That's exactly the kind of thing that got this other city in trouble because that's not within the narrow boundaries of the exception, and all discussions of that would have to happen in public. So it'd be very limited to settling that case under the circumstances that the lawyers will present to you or that you may wish to present back through the lawyers to the other side. But that's what it'll be limited to. And if questions come up, I know because I've conducted a bunch of these, you will be politely told, yeah, we can't talk about that. And that will be the end of that. Because that record that's being kept by that court reporter, it eventually gets made public when the litigation is over, and it can be and has been used to prosecute councils who violated sunshine. So we got to keep you within the boundaries. And it's one of the reasons I'm not a big fan of shade meetings in the litigation context, because they're hard to do right.
So will you provide what the scope?
Oh, the lawyers will be there. We will be guiding you the whole way. It's really on us to keep you straight, as long as you understand when we do it, we're not trying to be rude, we're just trying to keep you in the lines.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Cliff. Chuck, you got anything?
Quick update, Bradley and myself and the building official, we've walked the property out at Camp Weewa. And I sent you a brief update earlier. We're taking it a building-by-building approach, and we meet every other week. So we've addressed the dining hall, the life safety issues have been resolved and corrected. Bradley, my discussion earlier is the fire alarm should be online today, fully operational? Yeah, permit approved, so we do actually have a call center that monitors all that. We go above and beyond code with that, so that's up and live today. And then, like I mentioned, we will take a building-by-building approach. We're only dealing with life safety issues right now. The aesthetic issues will be addressed going into the future, but I just want to give you an update of where that stands. We are not using any of the buildings to the back of that property. If y'all have the opportunity to go out and walk that property, there's some cabins way in the back. Those cabins haven't been used, and we're not addressing those right now. We're looking at those issues that are up towards the front of the property that get used. So I just want to let you know where that stands. And we'll continue to move forward with that property and address those issues going forward.
All right, thank you, Chuck, appreciate it.
All right, the mayor's report, a couple of things. We've got the Small Business Expo and Symposium. It's for small businesses and home-based businesses put on by the Chamber, we're partnering with them. That will be Tuesday, next Tuesday, the seventh, 11:30 all the way to 6:00 PM. So they've got lunch and kind of light hors d'oeuvres will be provided. So 11:30 to 6:00 on November 7th, Tuesday. And it should be a really, really good opportunity for our small businesses to get some knowledge of AI and all kind of things that we kind of take for granted. As to Commissioner Velazquez, the Veterans Day Service, Saturday, November 11th, 11:00 AM, Kintland Nelson Park. Also talk about Officers Crespo and Brooks, you know, they beat the fire department to the scene and were able to deliver a baby, so. And then last, but I tell you, certainly not least, was in the new hire orientation today. And we had five new dispatch hires that were there. And, you know, as you know, we've been critically short on dispatchers. And so it's great to see we got five new, and I'm sure with the bonus we put together and with the, with the help of the, you know, police and fire, we've got a good crop that will really help us to meet the needs of our dispatch.
Mayor, before you adjourn, do you want to poll the council to see if they want to postpone the meeting for the 20th of December? Or do we want to continue forward? Then I need to know for advertising purposes.
What, the city council meeting?
On December 20th, there's a meeting scheduled. But if y'all are open to canceling that meeting, staff will adjust, make sure we advertise things, that's y'all's call. I know the week before Christmas sort of slows down, and we just wanted to see what your feelings were, if you wanted to have that second meeting in December or just have a single meeting.
I kind of saw on, you know, because I keep up, some of the other city councils have kind of canceled a couple of Christmas meetings because of, you know, vacations, the major holiday.
Well, I think it'd be nice for staff to have that time off too, that night meeting and all that.
So that's y'all's decision, I just need to know what direction you'd like to go with it.
I'm good with canceling.
Yeah.
I mean, to me, it's just business-based. I mean, if there's a lot of business that would be punitive to either staff funding or applicants or work that needs to be done, I'll let you all make that decision, but other than that, then yeah.
If y'all are good with it, I'll work to cancel it, we'll make sure we move things around to adjust that.
Couldn't we move that to 1:30? And just make it a day meeting?
We could, but we can also adjust things. All we have is a couple of things that need to be advertised, and they've got to have two readings. So, you know, we can adjust it to be the first meeting in December and the first in January.
I think we got four and a half cancellations.
No, I'm good, I'm good, I'm good.
And then, Mayor, the only other thing we want to, just to make sure that the public knew and it's on the city's website, is that the online permitting is done, the planning side is still being worked on. We've got a couple of issues that we're dealing with that, but you can go online and actually do your permit request and submit online. So that is up and running, and it has been working out pretty well.
All right, thank you. Meeting.